Good evening. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the September 11th, 2024 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carrollk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom with the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Today during our regular moment of silence, we will pause to remember the tragic events of September 11th, 2001. On this day, we honor the lives lost and the first responders who gave everything to save others. Our thoughts are with the families and communities affected, and we stand in solemn remembrance. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Dr. Dorsey and seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Pataglia. Corrections, additions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I need an approval of the minutes, and these will be the unapproved Board Meeting minutes of August 14th, 2024.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigny. Corrections, comments? Yes ma'am.
I actually have a correction. My name on page four is misspelled with Miss Khan. It's actually Kang with an A and G.
Thank you.
Very important.
Yep.
It is.
Anything else? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, we will have the Carroll County Student Government report.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Anya Slawinski. I'm a senior at Century High School, and I'm your CCSJA president for the 2024 to 2025 school year. On August 5th, 6th, and 7th, CCSJA attended the Maryland Association of Student Council's Advanced Retreat in Montgomery County. Over these three days, students received workshop certification and will be presenting at one of MASCE's upcoming conferences. For more information regarding MASCE, you can go online to the MD-SUCA webpage. Our executive board had two meetings over the summer where staff got trained and learned how to present a workshop. Along with this, we planned for our advanced retreat that was on August 29th in our upcoming Fall General Assembly. We had 30 students attend our advanced retreat, where we revealed the theme for this year, Agents of Change, and participated in team-building activities. We are looking forward to incorporating this theme in our general assemblies throughout the year and finalizing our plan for our Fall General Assembly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have public comment. Ms. Pataglia.
To have an orally presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the Board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the Board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Public participation is intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if a citizen, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and the Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the Board should be related to a recent agenda item and an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy where the Board has authority. Personnel matters pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The Board has scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the Board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers as deemed appropriate. The Board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for Board members on the table in the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or to the Board members. Our first speaker is, and if I mispronounce your name, please correct me, Diana Bergman?
My name is Diana Bergman. I'm a parent, a parent of two students at Liberty High School. Go Lions, Pop Pride! I've also been, in the past, participated in school construction projects for Baltimore County Public Schools. I was recognized and received an official citation by the Maryland General Assembly for working on the historic multi-year construction plan for all schools in Baltimore County. I also work, three years of professional experience implementing behavior intervention plans for children with special needs. I've lived in Maryland and in California. I was commissioner in California for the Community Development Advisory Commission. So what I'm here today with my hard hat from Baltimore County, one day hopefully I'll have one for Carroll County, but is to advocate for the importance of school facilities that meet 21st century schools. Lansdowne High School is one of the schools that I advocated strongly with, and I spent eight years of people telling me, "There's no money, find the money." Well, we found the money if you've driven by Lansdowne High School. $154 million construction is going great. And at Liberty High School, because I like those LHS schools for my kids, at Liberty High School, I know it has the potential to meet the needs of today. And I know safety is in the forefront of everybody's mind, and a lot of school buildings across our nation, when we're looking at safety, especially the new construction building, have a waiting period time to identify visitors to the building and secure the building. So we could have a friendly, welcoming, safe environment due to the current climate that this nation is facing. Some of our older aging infrastructure does not provide that opportunity. And we should do things like that. We should be able to provide that needed accommodation. I've had experience in the past where the school called me because a child was in crisis, and I spent 20 minutes outside waiting to get buzzed into a building, not being able to do my job. So that's what happens when you have unique sites, unique challenges, it makes it harder for your safety team plan to provide the much-needed support. I mean, it's still possible, we could still do it, but it shouldn't have to be like that, especially if schools have been already selected and prioritized to do more than just a limited renovation. You could have full renovations, or you could have a new building. So there's a lot of options out there. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to attending more Board meetings. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gary Foote.
Good evening, Board members. I could spend a good part of a semester describing lessons learned from last summer's Olympics. I only have three minutes. I'll try to give the executive summary. The 33rd Olympic Games this past summer in Paris marks the first time in history that the number of women competitors was equal to the number of men. For the United States team, 58% of medals won were won by the women. None of this would have been possible without Title IX legislation passed in 1972 and signed into law, I'll bet you'll never guess, signed by Richard Nixon. At my old high school in Western Pennsylvania, as soon as Title IX was passed, the school board promptly cut the men's basketball program, I'm sorry, the men's baseball program. They reasoned that, number one, one sport per season was good enough for anybody. We had football in the fall, basketball in the winter, and track and field in the spring. Number two, the baseball team wasn't very good. And third, and most importantly, this meant they only had to fund three women's teams instead of four. Unfortunately, this kind of thinking still persists. The University of Maryland has one of the best swimming facilities in the area. Sadly, they do not have a swim team. Why? From much of the same reasoning I've already described. Any scout will tell you that talent is everywhere, but opportunity is not. Education and athletics are two areas where opportunity has long been denied certain classes. When opportunity is finally granting, granted, it is refreshing to see the result. If you watched the men's 100-meter final, it resulted in a photo finish, a finish where the position of seven of the eight finalists had to be measured before a winner could be determined. The eighth-place finisher ran 100 meters in 9.92 seconds, which would have won the race 20 years ago. When opportunity is granted, competition often gets far more intense. There are certain people used to being at the top who aren't necessarily happy about that. My son has friends from college who like to brag that when they were in high school, they were lapped by Katie Ledecky. These kinds of stories can't be told by Carroll County students because we don't support competitive swimming. It turns out that last summer, three swimmers from Katie Ledecky's old high school made the Olympic team. Why? Because that school invested in facilities, attracted qualified coaches, paid for training so their athletes use the best possible methods, and of course, they benefited from role models that demonstrated exactly what was possible, and they showed students how to get it done. Isn't that what all students deserve? What leadership are you giving so that new opportunities will be granted as opposed to denied? And what will you do to make this available to everyone? Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kim Zentz.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Kimberly Zentz, and I am proud to represent the newly-formed Carroll Learning Alliance, a nonprofit organization dedicated to expanding educational opportunities in Carroll County. Our mission is to empower families by providing exceptional academic programs through public charter education. My colleagues and I decided to collaborate with the Board and the public education community to introduce charter education to Carroll County. Our first initiative is to establish Carroll Classical Charter School, a public charter designed to offer high-quality classical education to CCPS students. This aligns with Maryland's charter school agenda, which aims to create alternative means within the existing public school system to provide innovative learning opportunities and creative approaches to improve student achievement. By expanding opportunities in Carroll County, we can build a brighter future for students across the county and address the growing needs of our community, all the while acknowledging that no two students have the same academic needs and learn the same. We believe that the success of Carroll Classical Charter School will open doors to future programs, including a Montessori charter and a high school charter with an agriculture and farm focus. We have already reached out to your charter school liaison, which we're so thankful for, and we look forward to leaning on the expertise of this Board when we work towards achieving our mission. Together with your support, our dedicated teachers, and local families, we can create something truly special for the future of education in Carroll County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last speaker, again, I'm sorry if I mispronounced the name, Yugenama Kalu?
It's okay. It's Gomachike Kalu. But, good evening, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Gomachike Kalu, and I serve as a student member of the Board of Education for Baltimore County Public Schools. I come before you today not just as a representative of my own district, but as an advocate for all students here across the state of Maryland, especially more than the 25,000 students here in Carroll County. When we hear the title Student Representative on the Board of Education, it implies that the individual's role is symbolic rather than substantive, and this perception undermines the potential impact of the student voice on the Board of Education decision. The title alone conveys the limited scope of authority, which is further compounded by a lack of voting rights, advisory council, and school visit privileges, which in all honesty is a right. By denying the student representative the full range of rights and responsibilities that come with Board membership, we are essentially telling students that their voices matter less than those around this very table. How can we expect a student representative to serve their peers effectively when they are stripped of the very tools needed to do so? When they cannot conduct school visits to witness the realities of the classroom firsthand? When they are not allowed to convene a council of students to gather diverse perspectives? How can they represent the voices of over 25,000 students if those voices are systemically silenced? In Carroll County, the student representative is restricted to a preferential vote. This effectively diminishes the role from one of genuine influence to a mere formality, hampering the student's members' capacity to engage with and accurately reflect students' needs and concerns. There may be some who argue that representatives shouldn't have voting rights due to their status as merely students, but let's consider what that truly says about how we view young people in our education system today. Students are the very people who live the consequences of every decision made by this Board. To deny a student representative a vote is to deny the collective vote of thousands of students who deserve a say in the policies that directly affect them. In Baltimore County, thanks to the collective effort of over five years of smobs from across various regions, I have the privilege of voting on critical issues, including this budget, a symbol of the trust in student leadership and the recognition that students are fully capable of contributing to these conversations. Carroll County has the opportunity to follow this path of progress, granting voter rights to student representatives, and recognizing their importance. So I implore you to ask yourself, when we invite students to the table, are we allowing them to be co-collaborators and co-create their education alongside us, or are they merely the subject of the conversation? Are they here to provide feedback and not provide actionable change? So, I stand here today with a commitment, not just for the students in my district, but for all students in Maryland. Because this isn't about one county, it's about ensuring that every student, no matter where they live, has a voice that is respected and valued. So I urge you, the Carroll County Board of Education, to reconsider the limitations placed on the student representative role and to make meaningful progress in shaping the direction and trajectory of education today. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all for public comment. All right, and now? And now we will move on to Board Members' Activities and Correspondence. Employees, oh, I forgot those two. Okay. Look, I'm on a roll.
I said keep it short. I didn't mean cut.
Well, you asked, and I just was gonna skip over you two.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, Board members. I am Celeste Jordan, President of CCA. The Carroll County Education Association is an educators' union, not solely a teachers' union. Some might say I'm playing semantics with that, but I'm not. CCA represents educators. Sure, some of us are classroom teachers, but members are also media specialists, school counselors, speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, registered nurses, interventionists, occupational therapy assistants, physical therapy assistants, parent educators, mentor teachers, reading specialists, math specialists, mental health therapists, Judy Center learning community teachers, JROTC instructors, academic facilitators, birth-to-five special education services, high school facilitators of student support, ESOL, now it's MML, resource teachers, advanced academic educators, career connection coordinators, and behavioral support specialists. We have special educators who work with students from birth to age 21 in a variety of settings, the classroom, learning for independence, best, autism program, Transitions Academy, to name a few. Actually, I just, Autism's Now Success? Okay, I'm gonna have to update this. Okay, I'm hoping I didn't leave anybody out of that list, but that's who we all are. For educators and students, September begins a new year. This year will be filled with new lessons, new challenges, and new chances to grow for both students and educators. This is also a time for the community to come together and support their schools. Schools are places where we learn about ourselves, about each other, and about the world around us. Together, we build friendships, discover our passions, and help one another succeed. To the students of CCPS, be curious, be brave, be kind, and don't be afraid of failure. Failure is simply feedback. Use it to grow and learn. To the educators of CCPS, your passion, creativity, knowledge, and commitment to CCPS students makes a lasting impression every single day. You inspire dreams, foster curiosity, and encourage growth. You make our schools a place where students can thrive. To the parents and guardians of CCPS students, educators appreciate your support. We hope to be partners through this year, and together, we will help every CCPS student succeed. So let's approach this year with enthusiasm, with kindness, assuming good intentions on everyone's part, offering grace to one another, and with a commitment to doing our best for every student of Carroll County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste.
Good evening, Dr. McCabe and members of the Board of Education. I'm Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing clericals, assistants, and LPNs working throughout Carroll County Public Schools. I begin this evening with a reverent reference to the tragedy that gripped our nation 23 years ago today. As with many others, this back then is vividly etched, this day back then is vividly etched in my memory. I understand the impact of that day because many times now, I wonder what I ate for dinner two nights ago, but that day will never be anything but a vivid memory. I was an instructional assistant at Spring Garden Elementary School, and because of how that day unfolded, I formed a forever bond with two CCPS educators that remains to this day. And this morning, I touched base with them both, one now retired living in Florida, and another still serving in our school system, as I do every year on this day. Years later, I had the pleasure of getting to know and become friends with the mother of the lead flight attendant on Flight 93 that went down in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, during one of my then-two additional jobs. This wonderful woman was a retired educator, giving us another point of connection. I traveled to Shanksville to see the People's Memorial before the National Memorial was built, and have been back to visit that memorial as well. We speak of the importance of sharing our stories, and on this day of remembrance, I want to say to those employed in our school system and those in our communities who suffered devastating loss that day, how important it is to continue to share the stories of this day with those who have no understanding of what that day meant to our nation. Please know that I and many others will never forget. Tonight, we stand here just a little over a week into our new school year. I am always inspired and encouraged by the optimism and buoyant nature of how the educators in our county look forward to the new students they will encounter and the ability to have lifelong impact on those students. And this year has been no different. In this year of continued change and challenges, there is still so much hope, but make no mistake, those challenges still exist. There will be much discussion on how to address those challenges and some very strong opinions expressed by those involved. But I ask everyone who has a stake in our students and county to remember that at the heart of the issue, Carroll County is blessed to have such depth of caring, kind, and empathetic educators who want nothing more than for all of our students to succeed. On an educational colleague and friend's social media page recently, she shared a post from someone in another state. The message said, "All the data in the world cannot accurately measure the love and heartbreak that goes into a single day of teaching children whose needs go far beyond the curriculum." Seven days into this school year, educators across our county are already seeing the validity of this statement. No matter your stance or viewpoint, I wonder if it's possible for all of us to take a step outside of those viewpoints to try to learn more about the true depth of the needs of our students that do go way beyond the curriculum. Knowledge is power and can give us all better understanding of the situations our educators face across the county each and every day, and maybe even help us to find common ground solutions through collaborative efforts. Before closing, I would also like to mention the combined efforts of CCA and CASE to support the Out of the Darkness Walk for Suicide Prevention at Crimold Park this coming Saturday at 10:00 a.m. I have had the honor to participate in the walk the past two years, but I'm unable to do so this year because of my recent surgeries. Please support this worthwhile cause if you're able, as way too many educators in our school system see the mental health struggles of our youth. In closing, and referring back to the significance of this day, I would like to share another quote, which has evolved from that day and is something for us to think about as we deal with the challenges of this time. The best way to honor those lost on 9/11 is to be the people we were on 9/12. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, at this time, we will do Board Member Activities and Correspondence, and we're gonna start out with Mr. Whistler, and we will just continue on down.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to school. On August 20th, I attended a Chamber of Commerce breakfast meeting in Tontytown. Commissioner Vigiliotti, the featured speaker, updated us on various county projects and the immense opposition to the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project, which calls for creating a 70-mile-long, 500,000-volt transmission line through our county. On August 22nd, I attended Liberty High's presentation to parents of incoming freshmen. I have an incoming freshman at that school. I hope many parents take advantage of back-to-school nights and orientation programs offered at all of our schools, and I really appreciate the efforts of every school administrator and staff member that stays late to connect with parents. It's so important to develop these relationships at the beginning of each year, and thank you for your extra time. On September 3rd, opening day, I visited four schools, Francis Scott Key High, Northwest Middle, Tontytown Elementary, and Runnymede Elementary, to welcome back students, staff, and parents. I really appreciated seeing all the smiling faces, and I experienced a great deal of positive energy from educators who I know will make this a very incredible year for our students. And to piggyback off Ms. Porter's comments, I too wrote some comments about 9/11, and I'd like to reflect on the significance of this day. Like Cindy says, I'm sure everyone remembers where they were and what they were doing 23 years ago today. As for me, I was serving aboard a U.S. Navy destroyer in the Persian Gulf, and I couldn't be here to check on my family and ensure they were safe. My neighbors and extended family members, they stepped up and gave me comfort. Whatever your story, whatever your situation, I think many agree that the tragedies of that day brought our nation together. And as families, I hope we teach our children and grandchildren the value of unity and the importance of protecting future generations from terrorism. So on this day, let's never forget the fallen. Let's share the stories of our nation's resilience and remember the heroism of our military and first responders. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Whistler. Dr. Dorsey?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Herbert. Before sharing my activities, I too would like to pause to personally remember the significance of today, 9/11, lest we forget. I agree, 9/11/2001 was one of those days where you remembered exactly where you were and what you were doing as the events of the day unfolded. We watched our TVs in disbelief as Americans were losing their lives. We saw firefighters, policemen, first responders, and emergency personnel sacrificing their lives to help others. We salute them for their bravery and service to our We salute them for their bravery and service to our country, and we honor the memory of all those who sacrificed their lives that day. On August 21st, I had the pleasure to attend an equity session that featured John Crown Apple. He is co-author of the book Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity. The book is being used as a resource to support equity planning and work in our schools, and this is work for every student. The main idea of the book is that we should honor everyone's dignity, which nurtures the feeling of belonging. Belonging is a human need. Students have to feel like they belong before they can make themselves available for learning. Belonging was viewed through three lenses, interpersonal, institutional, and instructional. Our afternoon that day, teachers were able to meet in regional groups to plan sessions for meeting with their school staffs. So I'd like to thank Dr. Moore for facilitating the activities of the day and for bringing Mr. Crown Apple to share with our Carroll County Schools Group. On August the 22nd, I joined in the festivities at Walmart in Eldersburg as the community came together to donate supplies for our students through WBL's Stuff the Bus. So I'd like to thank everyone who contributed. And I do hope that this year has gotten off to a fine start for everyone, and that it will be a very productive year for all.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Ms. Pataglia.
We are back in full swing. I spent the remainder of August with my children, swimming, going to the movies, back-to-school shopping, and restocking the groceries that they have devoured in my house to get ready for back-to-school and packing their lunches. My oldest headed back to college for her second year. I now have a junior in high school who now drives himself, and a fifth grader, who I thoroughly enjoyed embarrassing her on her first day of school for her fifth grade year as I drove up into the parking lot and got in the line, and then I got out and I danced as she walked into school. The teachers did find it funny, and they were like, "Yeah, Mom," but, but, you know, she was like, "Oh, my God, Mom, I can't believe you." But it's my baby, and it's her last, you know, first day there at elementary school. And I, I reflect back to, does not seem that long ago, her soon-to-be kindergarten teacher was sitting here in the audience, and Ms. Hen has since retired, but it was comforting to me as a mom to know that I had zero worries, and if, you know, I could open a line of communication with her, you know, always talk to her and email her, and always let her know that I was a mom first. So, you know, I just, I can't thank our teachers enough for creating memories with our children, and as parents, you know, we can look back and say, "Wow, you know, I remember my kid's teacher," so I want to thank all of you for everything you do. Good luck to all of our students participating in various fall activities. Seniors, I want you to enjoy every moment of this year because it will go by fast. I've attended a couple of community events as an individual. I do want to give a shout-out to Find Your Purpose for an incredible community event that they held, handing out school supplies for those that needed the assistance. We have many great nonprofits here in Carroll County that do some amazing work to help others, and also such as, you know, Shepherd Staff, who does some great back-to-school events as well. I started my fifth week in my college classes, Alcohol in the U.S. Society and U.S. Women's History 1870 to 2000, and I'm almost done. It's getting there. All right. I can taste the bachelor now. September is National Recovery Month and National Suicide Prevention Month. Both of these topics are so important in our health curriculum and in our community. Anyone that is going through struggles needs others to talk to them about how they are feeling, and as a community, we can do that. There are many resources anyone can find to get help, or just someone to listen to you, and remember, the world is better with you in it. Today marks 23 years since our country was attacked, and if you get a chance, we are very blessed here in Carroll County to have a 9/11 memorial. It is actually right over on, at the Emergency Training Center, right off of Washington Road. And I do believe when it was being built, our career and technology students helped develop the memorial as well as contribute to it. It is something actually really incredible to see. We do have a steel beam that was recovered from the rubble where the two towers once stood in New York City. So if you do get a chance to go over and, to see that memorial. Upcoming events, we have the LEC, I have an LEC meeting, Health Council, Freedom Planning, and the CAC. And lastly, to my husband, Friday is our 21st wedding anniversary, and without him and his support that he has given me in the paths that I have chosen, I just wanted to tell him thank you for everything that he has done and allowing me to be part of this.
Okay, Ms. Vigney.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Just a couple of quick comments tonight. I did want to say that the beginning of this year's school year was a little bit different for me. It was the first time that I was only having one kid go off to CCPS because my other is now attending college. So it was a, I, I just want to reflect on how thankful I am for this school system. The, it, it very much prepared my daughter for a successful college career. All of the opportunities that are afforded our students in the school system, the AP, the dual enrollment, the outdoor school, and even the, the 9/11 project that was one of the Shiloh curriculums with, with Mr. Sharala. That was a really amazing program for her to have gone through, and I, and even now, with my son starting his junior year, there were all kinds of questions that he had for his advisor, trying to get his schedule all worked out at the end of the summer, and his advisor was just absolutely amazing with helping him out. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. We have close to 4,000 employees in this school system, and every one of them is just, I mean, you come, you come to work every day and put your heart into it, and I just want to thank you. It really is an amazing benefit for our kids, and I'm very thankful for the school system. So thank you to everyone, and good luck in this new year.
Thank you. Ms. Chloe.
All right. So August 29th, we had our CCSGA Advanced Retreat as our president Enya Salinski said at Hoshawo. We had 30 students from both middle school and high school, and we learned a lot about giving speeches and talked a lot about our future plans. Today, on September 11th, I was at our joint meeting with our commissioners, and I learned a lot about the budget, which was really surprising for me because there's a lot of things that you don't know that go on behind the scenes. And then our next staff and executive board meeting for CCSGA will be September 17th, and we'll be working on our Fall GA. And then a couple of quick comments as well. I wish students a great start to the school year. This is my last year in CCPS, which is kind of scary now I'm about to go in the real world. So I'd like to wish all of our seniors strength during the college application season, as well as a reminder to meet with your counselor, and please stay on top of your deadlines, as well as a good luck to all of our fall athletes as our seasons start ramping up and we get ready for our real seasons. And I would highly encourage everyone, because it is 9/11, because I wasn't born when 9/11 happened, I can't say I remember where I was, but I do encourage all of our students to talk to their parents and ask them what it meant for them personally, and to realize what your history is like when you see yourself and your family in the context of 9/11. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I would like to talk about the Custodial and Maintenance Personnel Recognition Day. These are my buddies, I love them. Tuesday, September 17th, is Custodial and Maintenance Personnel Recognition Day. These employees do whatever it takes to keep our buildings clean and well-maintained, and to make our schools a safe, clean, and comfortable place to teach and learn. Their work is very vital, and we could not operate our schools safely and efficiently without them. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank all of the employees in our Facilities, Maintenance, and Operations Department for their hard work and dedication to our schools. And I would like to welcome everybody back. The group in the back there on the left-hand side, you all never went anywhere, you just worked harder over the summer, so I'm glad you're still here. We had an incredibly smooth opening day, and it was a very uneventful first day. And when you talk about the first day of school being uneventful, opening is a very good thing. We didn't lose any students getting on and off the school bus. They all got to where they were going in the morning, and they all got home safely. But before school started, I had the opportunity to greet and talk to the physical education teachers at Winters Mill High School, and it was really a fun time, wonderful spending time with them. As a former physical education teacher, I can certainly identify with all the feelings and emotions, good and bad, that came with that first day. I want to thank the many employees who worked so hard to get us ready for the first day of school. The reason we have such a smooth opening is because of all the hard work during the summer. Most people don't realize that the day after the last day of school, we immediately began preparing for the next year. Our custodial and maintenance staff have done an incredible job of making sure our schools are in perfect condition. I had the opportunity to visit Career and Tech Center on the first day, and I can tell you, I've never seen a building so clean and well-maintained, inside and out. It was spotless, and the shores were so shiny. And then I went to North Carroll Middle yesterday. That's an old school, but those terrassen floors are absolutely beautiful. And I went to Winters Mill the other day. They were out there mowing grass and blowing grass off the sidewalk, so I cannot thank them so much for all the work they've done and that deep cleaning they did when everybody was out of the buildings. So I just want to thank them, because we can't do this without everyone. Also, as I said, I've been riding around the county, visiting schools, and I've noticed how immaculate condition the outside of our school grounds are. They're just beautiful. So in conclusion, I have a little short video I would like to share with you. It shows how all this hard work comes together to create a great first day for our students and staff.[1316.67] And as always, I want to thank Carrie, Bob, Pat Flannery and his group for always doing a wonderful video for the first day of school. And if y'all took notice, the high school kids didn't run in. All right. And now we're going to move on to Dr. McCabe's report.
This evening, I'd like to thank everyone who worked so hard to ensure that our schools and classrooms were ready for the return of our students last Tuesday. As always, much activity occurred during the summer months in order to have everything in place for the first day of school, and I really am grateful to everyone for their efforts. I'd also like to welcome our new teachers to the school system. We are very proud to have had former Maryland Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Nancy Grasnick, as the keynote speaker at our new teacher orientation. She delivered an inspiring and powerful message. I also had the pleasure of meeting many of our new teachers and bringing remarks at the orientation. Best wishes to everyone for a great school year. In closing, I do have one award to tell you about this evening. Natasha Costley, a special education teacher and corollary track and field coach at Westminster High School, has been recognized as a Chick-fil-A Everyday Hero for her work with the school's food pantry, The Owl's Nest. The Everyday Heroes Program, sponsored by Chick-fil-A Restaurants and WMAR2 News, celebrates people doing good in their community. You can watch the news story featuring Natasha and her students on the CCPS Facebook page. Congratulations Natasha on this well-deserved recognition.
Very well deserved. I've been there before. And now we're going to move on to Pillar One, Academic Achievement. And as while they're coming up, I want to preface this by, these people had planned one whole, whatever, report for us, and then yesterday, they received another new report, and I bless them for doing this. I was going into the courthouse to my left, and here is this poor soul running around, walking around the sidewalk. And I said, Caleb, what are you doing? He goes, Ms. Herbert, I just needed to get out and get a breath of fresh air. So I do want to thank you all, because let me tell you something. You had done all that work and then had to revamp it. So I thank you all very, very much. But when I saw his face and him walking around, I thought, what is he doing? But now I understand why he needed a fresh breath of air. Take it away, Dr. McCabe.
This presentation will share the results of the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, or MCAP, from the 2023-2024 school year. This data was recently released by MSD. Staff will present on our MCAP achievement data, identify strengths and areas of focus, and identify curricular and school-based strategies for improving student achievement. As part of this presentation, staff will also provide the annual report on Pillar One of the CCPS Strategic Plan. While we are very proud of our standing amongst the Maryland school districts, we also recognize that there is a lot of work to be done here in CCPS, and we are ready to get to work. I will turn things over to Mr. Shokni, who will introduce the team.
Good evening, board members. We're going to work through a similar presentation that we've brought to you in the past. We're going to go through a little bit quickly, so we're going to hit all the data slides, then start to talk about some observations, and we'll tie in our progress and our strategic plan, because there are lots of connections to our MCAP performance, to what we've identified in Pillar One of the strategic plan. So with that said, I'll turn things over to Dr. Hart, Mr. Yerdal, and Ms. Hill, who'll lead us through the presentation. Whoops, I've got one slide. Dr. Hart's reminding me that I do have one thing I need to do before I turn things over to them. Thank you, Dr. Hart. So as we all know, Pillar One of the CCPS Strategic Plan is focused on improving academic achievement. We have targets in our Pillar One specifically to Grade Three Reading, Algebra One, and then also what we call College and Career Readiness, or CCR. So these will be data points that we'll hit along the way. And then I'll show you a slide of all of our targets and did we meet or not, and we'll definitely talk about where we'll go. We also have lots of folks from Mr. Warnock's departments in the back, from curriculum instruction, that can answer any specific questions as we go. All right. Thank you, Dr. Hart. Sorry about that.
Thank you. That's all right. That's okay. On behalf of the team, we'd like to say greetings and thank you for allowing us to share tonight. And first, we're going to begin with our objective, and our objective is used, we're going to use a presentation and discussion format, and we are going to review achievement data from the 23-24 MCAP administration, compare results with the 22-23 MCAP administration, identify strengths, areas of focus, and next steps, as Dr. McCabe shared. And our why is because we need to evaluate the progress of the priority focus areas identified in Pillar One, and inform-driven, data-driven decision-making. So we're going to begin with some of the highlights of the MCAP administration. We're going to begin by letting you know that the participants were students in grades three through eight, and students enrolled in Algebra One, ELA 10, Government, and Biology. There were two testing windows. The fall testing window was December and January, and the spring testing window was March through May. The fall performance levels did not change from the previous year. There were four levels, and Level Four remained a distinguished learner, Level Three, a proficient learner, Level Two was a developing learner, and Level One was a beginning learner. And of course, as Dr. McCabe just shared, our target is for students to achieve a Level Three or Level Four. We're going to begin with some of MSD's overall observations, and this information was shared with their press release. There was less information shared this year, but I will share what they shared with us. There was a slight increase in student proficiency for all the tests combined. ELA proficiency was 47.9%, and this year it is 48.4%, which is a 0.5% increase. Math proficiency was 23.3%, and this year it is 24.1%, which is a 0.8% increase. So again, they said slight increase, it was a slight increase. In comparison to the overall student populations, students identified as multilingual, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities had lower proficiency rates in ELA and mathematics. And proficiency in Science, Grades Five and Eight declined in all school districts and among all schools. The decline was more noticeable in Science, Grade Five. Mr. Yerdal will share state and CCPS comparison data for the ELA MCAP, and then I'll come back and summarize the information at the end.
Good evening. This is a map provided by MSD that highlights a range of proficiencies in all ELA MCAP assessments by county, ranging from 27.7% to 69.4%. Carroll County ranks second in the state with an overall proficiency percentage of 64.8%. This graph shows the proficiency percentage by ELA assessment, comparing counting scores from 2023 to '24 in blue and green, and State '24 proficiency in gray. We see small decreases in proficiency for ELA Three and Four, while maintaining or increasing proficiency by 1% to 2% in other ELA assessments. The chart on the right displays total test takers for each ELA assessment. This graph shows race and ethnic student group proficiencies in the county. This represents all ELA assessments compared from 2023 to 2024 overall proficiencies. We've maintained or have seen increases in proficiency in every student group represented except for our Asian population, which experienced a 1% decrease despite having the highest proficiency percentage. Looking at our farm students, we see a similar trajectory to our overall numbers with proficiency decreases in ELA Three and Four, while maintaining or experiencing increases in all other ELA assessments. We see our greatest increases in proficiencies for ELA Seven and ELA Ten by about 5%. This chart shows proficiencies amongst our students with disabilities across the county. You'll notice that we either increase in proficiency or remain the same in almost every ELA assessment except for ELA Five. Our greatest increase was by about 5% in ELA Seven, and our only decrease was by 5% in ELA Five. These charts provide the state ranking as well as the proficiency percentages for each ELA assessment for student groups, farms, students with disabilities, and multilingual learner. Anywhere you find an asterisk protects students from being easily identifiable due to proficiency percentages that are less than 5% or a student population size of under 10. Some highlights from these charts include relatively high state ranking placements for farms overall, ELA Six and Seven students with disabilities, and ELA Seven and Eight with multilingual learners. These charts provide state ranking and proficiencies by race and ethnicity. Due to our American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Hawaiian Pacific Islander numbers being less than 10 and broken down by ELA assessment, we've replaced ranking and percentages with asterisks. Some highlights include relatively high rankings for our African-American population, and moderate rankings, and most others with our lowest being in two or more races, ELA Ten and white ELA Three. At this time, we'll take a transition to our math data and look at our overall numbers. This map is also provided by MSD that highlights a range of proficiencies in all math MCAP assessments by counting, ranging from 9.8% to 41.1%. Carroll County ranks third in the state with an overall proficiency percentage of 37.7%. Looking at our overall performance for math MCAP assessments, we see moderate gains anywhere from 1% to 3% for math Three, Six, and Seven, and our greatest increase in proficiency amongst our Algebra One test takers of approximately 10%. Here's a graph representing the proficiency comparison of our students from '23 to '24 incorporating all math MCAP assessments. We find increases in proficiency amongst our students who self-identify as white, Hawaiian Pacific Islander, and Asian, with our highest increase being 7%, and decreases amongst our student population who self-identify as American Indian, Alaskan Native, Hispanic, and two or more races, with our highest decrease also being 7%. Looking at our farms data, we see increases in proficiency for math Three, Five, and Seven, as well as Algebra One, ranging from 1% to 7%, with our largest decrease in math Four of about 5%. You'll see state data redacted for math Eight due to the proficiency percentage being less than 5%. For students with disabilities, we have data redacted for math Six, Seven, Eight, and Algebra One due to the proficiency percentages being under 5%. We do see an increase in math Three of 1% and a decrease of 2% in math Five. Here are charts that represent state ranking and proficiency data by student groups, farms, students with disabilities, and multilingual learner. Some highlights include moderate to high rankings with farm students, but proficiency percentages still remain low in many areas. Looking at student group ranking and proficiency data, we continue to rank high amongst our African-American student population in math performance. Some rankings that show areas of improvement include students who identify as Hispanic Latino, math Five, two or more races, math Six, and white, math Eight. Now I'll go ahead and pass the science portion of the data presentation off to Ms. Hill.
All right. Looking at the combined proficiencies for both Science, Grade Five, and Science, Grade Eight by LEA, Carroll County ranks fourth with 33.2% proficiency when compared to all other school districts. However, if you look at the individual rankings for both Science, Grade Five, and Grade Eight, Carroll County actually ranked third in the state for each assessment. And when we look at overall performance, we see that Science, Grade Five had a decrease of 22% proficiency from school year 2022-23 to school year 2023-2024, while Science, Grade Eight had a decrease of 3%. But it should be noted that both have a higher proficiency level than the state data. And when we look at our student groups by race and ethnicity, we do see a decrease in proficiency among all student groups between 8% and 17%. And per MSD's data suppression rules, since our population size for American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Hawaiian Pacific Islander in Grades Five and Eight combined is less than or equal to 10 students, we were not able to provide student data due to the results being easily identifiable. All right. And when looking at our farm student groups, we see a decrease in proficiency percentage from the prior year in Science, Grade Five of 15%, and a decrease in Science, Grade Eight of 2%. And when looking at our students with disabilities group, the data for school year 2023-2024 has been suppressed because the number of students assessed was fewer than 10, or the proficiency percentage was less than or equal to 5%. And it should also be noted that the proficiency data for the state for Science, Grade Eight was also less than or equal to 5%. And looking at our state ranking in student groups, our farms group ranked third for Science, Grade Eight, and Grade Five ranked fifth in the state. State ranking has an asterisk in both students with disabilities and multilingual learners because the groups where 10 or less students were assessed, or that the proficiency was less than or equal to 5%. And when looking at our ranking data by race and ethnicity, our Black African-American students ranked first in the state for both Grade Five and Grade Eight's Science, while our students who identified as Asian ranked second for Science, Grade Eight. And now we'll move into our college and career readiness standards. So the new college and career readiness standards were adopted by the State Board of Education in January 2024, and there's two options for students to achieve CCR. The first option requires an unweighted GPA of 3.0 or higher, and either a grade of A, B, or C in Algebra One, or a proficient score in the MCAP Algebra One assessment. The second option requires students to score proficient in the MCAP Algebra, I'm sorry, MCAP ELA 10, and the MCAP Algebra One assessments. And the CCR flowchart on the right is just a visual representation of these options. So looking at this in practice, the CCR percentages for 10th grade students for school year 2022-2023 and school year 2023-2024, and looking at our percentages of students who achieved CCR under the previous standard versus the current standard, you can see that more students are achieving CCR with these options. And I'll turn the presentation back over to Dr. Hart.
Thank you, and thank the clicker for working with us at the end. But I just wanted to give some overall observations from the data that was just shared by Mr. Yerdal and Ms. Hill. First, we continue to perform above the state average in proficiency and rank high in all assessments in comparison to other districts. However, we completely understand the need and are focused on increasing the number of students achieving proficiency in all areas. And the content supervisors that are behind us have been working hard and working and meeting with us quite often, and so we appreciate the collaboration with them. We are above the state average in proficiency in our ELA assessments, and we maintain proficiency percentages in ELA Five, but increased in ELA Six, Seven, Eight, and Ten. We decreased in proficiency percentages in ELA Three and Four. In comparison to the 2022-2023 school year, the ELA MCAP results, ELA Seven and ELA Ten had an increase of 2%, resulting in 70% of the students achieving proficiency. In ELA Ten, Black African-American students increased by 6% and ranked second in comparison to sixth the previous year. And Hispanic students increased by 5% and ranked fifth in comparison to ninth the previous year. For ELA Eight, students with disabilities increased by 6% and ranked fifth in comparison to ninth the previous year. And ELA Three and ELA Four farm students decreased by approximately 3%. And we gave you an approximate number because there were some decimal points in there, so we just kind of averaged up or went down depending on where the number was. So I'm going to use that approximate for that part. And then if you look at the overall math observations, we maintained our proficiency percentages in math Five and increased in math Three, math Six, math Seven, and Algebra One. We decreased in proficiency percentages in math Four and math Eight. In comparison to the previous school year, in Algebra One, our farm students increased by approximately 7% and ranked fourth in comparison to eighth the previous year. Black African-American students increased by 3% and ranked first compared to second the previous year. White students increased by 10% and ranked fifth in comparison to 14th, please. Students identified as two or more races increased by approximately 12% and ranked seventh in comparison to 15th the previous year. And our multilingual learners in math Three maintained a third ranking, and the proficiency rate increased by approximately 8%. Our science observations, we ranked fourth in Science, Grades Five and Eighth combined in comparison to the other school districts. However, we do want to note individually, both Science, Grades Five and Eighth ranked in third. We performed above the state average in the Science, Grade Five and Eight assessments, but we decreased in our overall proficiency percentages. And then when you compare that to the previous year's results, in Science, Grade Eight, Hispanic students had an increase of 4% and ranked sixth in comparison to seventh. And our Asian students increased by 2% and ranked second in comparison to seventh. We had an overall proficiency decrease of 22% in Science, Grade Five, and 3% in Science, Grade Eight. And next, Mr. Shokni will share information on Pillar One.
Thank you, Dr. Hart. Okay, it was board members, so we're just going to take a moment, and these are screenshots directly from your strategic plan. And last year, we set some baseline targets, or a year before that, actually, we set some baseline targets, and for what we wanted to achieve for three years of the plan. The first priority focus area there is related to Grade Three ELA. And while we comparatively scored very high across the state, our Grade Three reading data didn't grow, in a sense, and I would probably use the words, remain flat or stagnant. But overall, in the all-student group, it didn't grow. We had a target of 65%, and our overall achievement was 61%. Same thing, we identified then the three key student groups, or just three student groups identified in the blueprint. All of our student groups are important. But the three targeted priority areas in the blueprint, students experiencing economic disadvantage, we had a target of 50%. We scored 41%. Multilingual learners, we did meet our target there at 22%. We met the target of 20 or greater. And then our students receiving special education services, we set the target of 20%, but scored 18%. I have specific strategies that we're going to get to as we go, as to what we're going to do. But I will tell you now, we have made, obviously, we have short-term strategies and we have long-term strategies, but we have made very, we have targeted grades Three through Five this specific school year to accelerate, and I'm calling them some acceleration strategies that we're going to implement this year, in addition to all the other things that we have happening at the county level, at the school level, in our comprehensive literacy plan as well. But I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. Math, if you could, Caleb, thank you, sir. So math, we did meet our targets as identified there. We met each of our targets and probably, you know, should maybe up the ante a little bit more, because as you can see in our performance, we're already in some areas, like, for example, in the all-student group, we've already met the target for year two, so we might want to take a look at bumping up that target slightly. But we did meet our targets for the overall student group, and this is, again, based on Algebra One. That was a key component that we identified through the strategic plan. And I say this, you all know this, but for the community, this, listen, these aren't our only focus areas. These are the priority focus areas that we identified in our strategic plan, because a lot of things culminate with these achievement scores. Algebra One's a great example of that. CCR culminates as a factor of that, but it's also, you know, if we're doing well in all of our other grade levels, we're going to do well in Algebra One. And then the next one, please. And then the next one, focused specifically on CCR, our college and career readiness. We, this is a little bit difficult because we had apples to oranges. Our baseline was based upon the old metric. We now have a new CCR standard, and we achieved a 58% on that, which is and we achieved a 58% on that, which is great. There was a slight dip, if you noticed, from when we applied the data to last year's data. But, but there's some complications with that because we evaluate that 50% at the end of 10th grade. So we know that we have some students, for example, that might take Algebra I and do very well in Algebra I, but they might take it in eighth grade or ninth grade. So sometimes that, but the students typically don't take English X, obviously, until 10th grade. So there's a little bit of time and that data is a little bit of a lag for it to all to catch up. Because I asked the initial question of, we went up in ELA X, we went up in Algebra I, how do we dip a little in, in CCR? Because that's part of the metric, but grades are also part of the metric as well, too. So I think as that, as we have more time and cycle through our students with that new CCR standard, I think we'll continue to see good growth in that area there. All right, so I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Warnock. He's going to talk about some next steps and specific strategies related to curriculum. And then we're going to talk about some specific strategies at our school level. Mr. Warnock.
Good evening. Our curriculum administrators have been working hard and looking at next steps. Our focus is really on training teachers on the science of reading, really teaching them, how do you teach reading to our students? Not only students that are struggling, but how do you then enrich our students who need enrichment? I think, you know, the last couple of years that we've fallen away from solid instruction and fidelity to our curriculum. So we're moving back to that and ensuring that everyone understands the purpose and how to teach reading. With that being said, as we look at our new instructional materials, especially for II through IV, we're looking at Benchmark Advanced, as we shared with you. And that's really going to support us with new materials in supporting the teaching of reading based on the scientific research around the science of reading. We then hope to phase in the new instructional materials for the, the rest of the grades, pre-K through first and then grade V. If not next year, by the following year. So there's that fluidity across all grade levels. We're starting with grades really II through IV because that's the crush of where we see our students struggling. We know we have a strong foundation in K through, you know, I. Our pre-K as well shows great results. But we know that we need to make sure that our students, as you see with our data, really understand how to read. And that's really starts in second grade and turning, learning to read to reading to learn. And then with that being said, we also want to ensure that our assessments are aligned to our instruction. As we look at our assessments, we want to make sure that we're tweaking the assessments so that our students understand our questions and that they truly align to what is being taught so that we can assess and then monitor our data and our, and our curriculum. At the secondary level, we're focusing on writing, but that's just not at the secondary level. We'll be backward mapping, communicating through writing because as we find out, our students know content, but sometimes they struggle to communicate in writing. And so we find that especially on MCAP, that is, is a deficit for us. So we're going back and really teaching the foundational skills of writing to communicate so that our students can really express themselves within, within their contents. Within math, we've been looking at our common unit assessments, but really updating them, as you can see, especially with Algebra, to ensure that what is being taught is being measured, as I spoke to in ELA. We're also looking at the code teaching and planning models between our classroom teachers, our math resource or special ed, to ensure that our students understand the simple mathematic computation skills. Because we find that if our students don't, do not have those computation skills, they struggle within more advanced math techniques. Our supervisors are also reaching out regularly to our administrators and our teachers to meeting with them, to look at data, to look at planning. Our supervisors are also going into classrooms as needed to do code teaching and supporting our, our teachers in math. We've, we've also taken, and as we shared with ELA, looking at interventions and supports within math. And so we're looking at several ones, bridges that we've been used at the elementary, but really focusing that on our needs of our students. And then we've really seen great success with IXL within the secondary level, and we'll continue to monitor and use that. And we feel that that has really increased our scores within our local benchmarks and as you've seen within our MCAP data. And then, as we did last year, we had to develop a comprehensive literacy plan for math. This year, we'll be developing our comprehensive math plan. It starts with the primary grades and the elementary grades. And then we'll continue to focus within the secondary grades after we develop our elementary plan. And so that's really going to target us on what we do for the next several years.
Mr. Warnock, can I ask a couple of questions about math before we move on? I know it's one of, it's, you know, we're, we're in the top three in the state. You, you want to celebrate that. But when you look at the actual proficiency percentages, it's not a good result, right? And I know a couple of years ago, we talked about how some of that was driven by COVID and the schools being shut down and missing like some core instruction and math concepts at the end of the year and then just trudging forward the following year, like missing some of that foundational stuff. And I know that we were trying to catch kids up and try to, try to go back and get some of that foundational work. Does that seem like it's panned out? You know, I'm, I'm just struggling with trying to understand why. We had a significant drop off in, in the math proficiency right during COVID, and it hasn't, hasn't really come back, right? Like, so there've been some increases, but we haven't made up that significant drop off that we had during the pandemic.
Three things that are constantly evolving: curriculum, instruction, and assessment. All those things, all those three items are very interrelated. So I know that our, our math folks who are sitting back there are working very hard to make tweaks and revisions to curriculum based upon how our students are achieving on the state assessment, but well as our local assessment. And you've heard us talk a lot about the integration of more common assessments in mathematics, especially at the secondary level. And the team and our teachers have done a great job building those. But it's, they're still in their earlier stages. We're revising and they're evolving over time. But, but I do think it's going to be a long, it's, it's difficult to, to impact immediate change with this as well. But I do think as we continue to revise those three things over time, we're going to continue to get better and better. We know that we have more students, looking specifically at Algebra I. We have more students taking Algebra I earlier. And we have great success of our students who take Algebra I in those earlier grades. But it's not just Algebra I. Like I'd mentioned before, it's making sure that we've got great vertical alignment between grade levels to where our, our content is being taught. Because it's a, it, it's, there's a lot of mastery content in mathematics, meaning that we don't, we teach one subject, one topic, we move on to another, we move on to another. And, you know, there's not a lot of opportunity for spiral review, although we do do that throughout the course of a unit. But it's that, it's fine tuning that, that longer range piece. I do think we're going to glean some greater information as we develop and look at that comprehensive mathematics plan under the blueprint. There's a lot of eyes and a lot of, a lot of folks working on that to say, you know, what is it that we're doing well? What is it that we're not doing well? What do we need to change instructionally? And making sure that, that written curriculum is what gets delivered. And pacing is a big part of what we do and a focus area for us to make sure that, you know, we're, we're, we're reaching all of our benchmarks that we want to accomplish over the, the course of the year. Because it's very easy sometimes to get too far off from your, your scope or sequence of, of activities that you want to do over the course of the year. And then you end up in a situation where you don't get to everything, you know, that you need to cover in the course of the year. So that's, that pacing has been, is going to be very important.
And I would just add to that, that during COVID, not only did we see our students struggle to meet the standards, but during that same time, we saw a large portion of our teaching staff retire over the course of those few years. And then we replaced them with many more conditional teachers than we normally employ. And so I think that's a perfect storm, so to say, to see what we're seeing. And so we are realizing now the need for more professional development for our teachers, to get them familiar with our curriculum, our assessments, and the instructional strategies that, that we want them to use. Because the teachers that are in our classrooms now are younger, more inexperienced. And we saw a lot of our, a lot of our teachers hit that retirement age and, and take that option.
It's helpful to understand all the components that go into it. I mean, I know when we look at the ELA results, took a big hit after COVID, but those seem to have rebounded fairly well, right? But the math hasn't, right? We spent a lot of time over the last two years kind of looking at the results, saying, and, and kind of building a lot of what you were discussing earlier. It doesn't seem to have manifested itself in the way that we were hoping. So just curious what our thoughts were on.
Another component is when you look at math, ELA has many interventions. You can go out and buy an intervention for almost any component of ELA. Math, especially at the primary levels, do not have interventions. It's all really teacher-developed. You know, our curriculum administrators develop it. And so if, it's hard sometimes to look at those interventions because they're not consistent. There's nothing that you can just roll out and say, here are the interventions. We struggle, along with all other counties, to look for a math intervention that really supports. IXL is a great program at the secondary level. It's starting to develop, you know, at the, you know, they're developing at the primary level. But we have looked for many supplemental materials and over years, even before we struggled with our scores. And it's just difficult to find something that, that mirrors what we need.
And so I'm guessing that at the individual school levels, they're, they're probably going to be digging much deeper into these results and trying to understand what the needs are at that specific school.
We, we've released some data to the schools so they can begin their summer school improvement planning process. But we knew we wanted to make sure that, you know, we got this data to you. We'll do a full release as soon as possible. Ms. Herbert did, did mention, we did get a, an updated data file from MSD-E so that, that created a little bit of a scramble for us at the, at the last minute. But we'll release all this data back out. And obviously, this connects, and I don't want to steal too much of the thunder of, of Ms. Gramata, Ms. King, but, Mr. King, excuse me. But we, you know, the schools use this data on lots of different levels at our, you know, our school improvement level or the school-wide level, as well as the team level and teacher level. And we have a structure for goals and targets that we set that are all aligned with each other. And I know folks are eager to get their hands on, not just their school-wide data, but their student-specific data so they can look at and identify, you know, strengths and needs on a small group or even individual basis as well.
And the other thing I want to say is that Dr. McCabe announced, and for those who missed the, the meeting we had with the delegation, they're going to change the MCAP exam again. So, you know, come on, people, let's, let's get it together. I mean, it's not fair to our children. And then you can't make good comparisons, you know, of what specifically we need to do. Are we, what are we missing in division? Or what are we missing in multiplication? And it's not a service to our students, so.
Or our teachers, too. Because our teachers are like, you know, one thing worked for them and they were seeing good results, and then now it's going to be changed and.
Thank you, Dr. McCabe, for telling us that. That's great.
And, and a great point of, of support for our local assessments as well, too. Because we need our own assessments to, to evaluate how our kids are doing and so we can make adjustments as well.
Yeah, I'd love to, to see that kind of information as well, right? Like, okay, you have to do the state assessments and you want to compare yourselves to the other LEAs and, and everything. But if we think that there's maybe a mismatch between, if our local assessments say that, okay, we think our kids are understanding these, the, the material much better, we'd want to understand that, right? Like, are, are local assessments telling us something very different than the state assessments?
Yeah, very much. And we can further break down the, our data into, you know, standards and specific areas within a, within a, you know, within a subject area. And then that helps us, we can do the same thing with our local assessments, too. We look for trends. Where are we doing well in both places? Where are we doing bad in both places? Where are we doing better in one and the other and why? Some of that comes back to an item analysis. Sometimes that comes back to how well we did teaching a particular, a particular topic throughout the course of the year. So very much a part of the work that our principals, our assistant principals, and our content administrators behind us do with our teachers. I don't want to, I don't want to miss that point of the tremendous work that happens moving forward over the course of the year, not only with our state data, but with our local data and that analysis of, of how we're doing, so. And that drives our curriculum. So when we find out what we're doing well, we build on it. When we're not doing well in something, we make revisions to that. So that's part of that cycle that, that happens.
And it also goes back to when Dr. McCabe keeps telling us to go back to the basics, you know, and basic instruction. Because everybody that's being assessed right now are all impacted at the primary grades with COVID. If you start doing the count, all of these students were in elementary school where every grade band is significant, but the basics are taught in elementary school. And then you can build upon it in middle school and build upon that in high school. All of the students now that are being assessed had some type of impact in elementary school as far as the assessments. And now we're just seeing those results.
Here's, take us to science. Science. So you can see that many of our next steps really are similar in science, except the one that we really are looking at is ensuring teachers are provided, students with instruction that promotes like analytical thinking, interpretation of data, that critical understanding and writing, that problem solving. So that goes across all contents, but it's especially seen in science with those hands-on activities and with the data that's provided to them. And so we want to make sure that they're capitalizing on that within science. Then they can use it, you know, within math or use it in other areas so that they can see the connection of ELA math, science, social studies. It's all one.
All right. Next slide. I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Gramata and Mr. King as I get that right this time. To talk us through our short-term strategic actions as well as some long-term actions at the strategies at the school level.
Good evening. Thank you. If you can, I'm not going to go through every single bullet, but certainly a theme that you see as you review those is the need for professional learning. We can't expect to get different results if we're not trying to do things differently and reach all of our different learners. So that is the key to what we're working on, you know, at this point in time with a lot of our focus being with our reading specialists and our math resource teachers that we definitely, that we have reading specialists throughout K to 12 and then the math specialist or resource teachers in K to six. And so really using them as our conduit of professional learning to get, you know, to them, to then go down to the classroom teachers. Believe it or not, I've been doing this for 31 years and kids have changed a lot over those 31 years. And the way they learn have changed a lot as well. So it's important that we're changing, you know, with them. And so we can only do that if we're providing our teachers the resources they need to instruct differently. So we also, at a lot of our schools, have that before and after-school tutoring, specific with that science of reading piece is going on at the elementary school level. But all, many schools K to 12 have some form, especially the comp ed schools, of the before-after-school tutoring to support our students. At the elementary level, all reading specialists are participating in the science of reading training. Nick can answer those questions because I was a math teacher and I'm secondary. But, but another big piece of what we're trying to do, and, you know, we, we are very good, I think, K to 12 at understanding what data says. One thing that we're working on with ourselves and then also our school-based administrators and our teachers is now what do you do with that data, right? So how does that data drive our school improvement plans, drive our goals that we have as a grade level or a department? You know, how does it drive what we're doing down to the actual classroom with this individual student? And so that's been a big focus, especially for us at the middle school level, of what we're trying to do as far as how we use the data. We're very fortunate, we have a lot more common assessments at the secondary level now that we're not used to having. So part of professional learning with the secondary teachers and admin is how to use that data on a more timely basis to make instructional decisions. And so, yeah, so and a lot of the, the professional learning that we're looking at is also that code teaching model that was referenced earlier so that we have kind of more hands on deck to be able to respond to student need right there within the classroom. And that's also important because as you kind of understand the code teaching model, it also becomes much easier to implement in your own classroom by yourself when you don't have, you know, another adult in there. So we're hoping to, to also be able to engage more differentiation within the classroom through that model and then expanding it. I think that's.
And then, board members, just to point out the three, the, the acceleration strategies that I referenced earlier specific to grades III, IV, and V, they're listed up there. But the reading specialists are going to be pulling specific groups of students during the course of the day. We're going to provide during the day professional learning for, for teachers in grades III, IV, and V around the science of reading. And then we're going to begin some targeted before and after-school tutoring for, again, specifically for students in III, IV, and V. And then next slide, and I'll turn things over to Mr. King. Go over some long-term strategies for us. If we can get it to go.
We're going to send him back to school to learn how to operate that thing.
All right, so good evening. I have the pleasure to talk about the longer-term strategies.
I have the pleasure to talk about the longer-term strategies, and I believe every really good point I was going to make has been made. So, let me, and that's great, because it shows that we're all on the same page and working together. And I think some of the things, especially, too, that Ms. Gramada said, is as you see a lot of the things target and analyze, I mean, use this data, these things aren't easy. And although we we're hiring folks that are well-prepared by the colleges and universities, the more time we can spend on them, starting with our administrators, and certainly our supervisors are a huge part of that as well, the more more efficient they'll be at looking at a common assessment, which our supervisors will spend incredible amount of time developing and actually making the decision for the next day. And I think people don't realize, like, this is so fluid for a teacher, where we envision a lesson plan for two weeks, and that's what I'm doing. I said the Civil War, I'm doing the Civil War. And teachers, especially in the ELA and the the algebra, have to be able to make daily changes to what they're going to do and tweaks so that the students are are staying on board and that they're they're capturing them and keeping them moving. Because as as Mr. Shockney said, if you can't get the first concept right, when you get to that next equation, you're not going to be able to complete those problems, you know, correctly. So I'll continue to stress the need for the professional development and the work that we're going to do. And and again, I'll let Mr. Shockney once chime in on some of the specific elementary strategies. But in the extended resources, and again, you guys have heard a little bit about the PLE at the high school level, which is has reaped incredible benefits and will continue to as we tweak it and improve it, because we're able to give more resources, more staff, more different professionals with great skill sets, access to the students that need them most, which is one of the great benefits of the blueprint. And then certainly, as we change some models and instructional days to get to the 60-40, it should create more time for master teachers to do the the interventions that that Mr. Wernick mentioned, that have not been part of high schools until the last few years. I mean, we've always tutored, but actual specific interventions like IXL Math, which has been great, which we're going to continue to use, that we're going to continue to take the most talented people and put them in front of the students they need more, which, again, the career ladder is going to do that incredibly well, and I'm excited about that. And then the new teacher induction program, which you saw in both slides, is, I hope, and when Mr. Shockney started to explain that to us, may be one of the best things we all do, because it's really going to get these new teachers the talent and skills that they need to do the things that are important to us.
We're very excited about the 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 development of the of the the teacher induction program. We're calling this kind of Year Zero, which is our build year, working with our staff and with partners to be able to build and frame the induction program with looking to implement that the following school year. So it takes some work, because we want to do it well, we want to do it right, and we want a framework around it and supports and resources that goes along with it, but that's a big piece that will be part of the work as we move forward to help coach our newest teachers, as well as just provide support and professional learning for our existing staff as well, too. So with that, we're quite...
Dr. Dorsey.
Yes, I just have a question concerning the the whole process, because, again, I know it takes time to delve into the data and to question, what is this data showing me or what is it telling me? What can I glean from this information? Guess I'm concerned about the timing of the whole thing. I know it used to be a time when we would get our results in so that during the summer, the administrators and the school and school improvement teams could actually meet, go over that data, and make some plans for the next year. So, I mean, is this whole process, is the timeframe going to be changing any for us?
We don't know. The good news is, we got the data earlier this year than we did last year. We we hope that that continues to to become more timely, because the earlier, to me, I put my old principal hat back on, it is, it is, at the end of the school year, early in the summer is a great time to unpack the year. It's fresh on everyone's mind, what worked, what didn't work. And so the sooner we can get that data, you know, after that assessment window closes, the the better things will be, because because, again, then we can have some time to think, process, and plan, and then go do. So a lot of our schools, you know, have have developed, almost all of our schools have developed, completely developed their school improvement plans. They're going to go back, they'll take a look at things, but it is better to have this from the start than, this is where we think we need to be, but this is where the beauty of our own local assessments come in. But still, ultimately, we know that there's tremendous weight in the MCAP, so we want to make sure that, you know, obviously, our strategies align with, you know, what our MCAP data is telling us. But I agree that the sooner we can get it, the better. And if it's really ideally at the end of the school year or as early as possible in the summer, I think that's when teams do their their best work.
So are we giving the school improvement teams any extra time?
Yes, they have time, yeah. So they, we, when we kind of heard that the data was coming out, we had a timeline set, they have some flexibility. Almost all the, all the plans are just about all written, but then now they're going to go back, take a look at things, and make some adjustments from there. But they do have some flexibility on timing with that as well, also.
Okay, and I see my old reading assessments are going to be leaving me, the DIBELS and RRI, the running records and all that.
Lots of shifts in the science of reading. It's very exciting. There are some things that were ingrained that we had, you know, had done for a long time, but now through some, through research and and we're learning that, you know, those strategies didn't have the impact that we would, we would hope that they would have. But, yeah, lots of changes, exciting times. All of our specialists are going through that training. They're going to come back and work with the staff, and then we're going to do some targeted initial early work, just with our three to five teachers as part of those acceleration strategies.
So, again, are the reading specialists going to have time? I mean, are we giving them time so we can have subs? I don't know, that's how we used to do it, we used to get subs in.
Yep, their their professional learning, I'm looking back at Ms. Byrd, is during the day. The the reading specialists work, sorry, come on up.
Come on down.
This is Ms. Byrd, who is our new elementary reading supervisor.
Good evening, board members and Dr. McCabe. So, our reading specialists had opportunities through our state partnership to take the SUNY reading course, which is asynchronous. They can take portions of it, they could take during the school day, there are some professional learning opportunities during the school day, and they also were invited to participate in a shorter versioned literacy coaching course. So, they're going to be very busy this year, much like the opportunities for the teachers, the state, excuse me, the state also invited all elementary teachers to participate in the SUNY course as well. So, thank you.
Sure. Okay. I'm going to make a comment, then Ms. Savigny, then Mr. Whistler. The state knows who I am, because I did, in years past, bring it up every month, that where are the numbers? So, come on, state, let's get with it, and I'm going to tell you right now, because my days are numbered, but Carroll County and all over the state of Maryland, we need our numbers earlier than later, because we have a job to do. And we work our best when we have our numbers early and that we can work on that. And I will say another thing that I think has happened in the last four years. And I went to thank the commissioners for allowing us, with that budget, to get our number one and our number two employees, our educators, this year. We have not had that in the past. We have had empty positions. We have had substitutes in front of our students. We've had non-certified teachers. We need to go forward, we've got a wonderful workforce this year, and you all have a job to do. So let's get it done and do it right. And I will never forget the night that Stephanie Dale was raked over the coals by you and I when the, our ELA numbers were not good, and things have gone very positive since then. God bless her, she's moved on, I miss her, I stay in touch with her. But, you know, we need our numbers now, not not later, not when school starts, you know? That serves no purpose for us. We're behind the eight ball as it is, we need them earlier than later. State, let's get it done. Thank you, Ms. Savigny.
Well, Ms. Herbert, you hit on both of the points that I was actually going to make, so.
We've been here a while.
We're all good here. I was basically going to say, you know, the same thing you said about the data, and and Dr. Dorsey, you brought up the great point to begin with, where we're getting it too late for, you know, it's like, why do you get the data? You get the data so that you can analyze it and so that you can figure out where you need to make improvements, and you need to be thinking strategically and high-level, and you can't do that when you get the data the first week of your new school year. It's too late to do anything about it. It's like you can, you just don't have the time to focus on it the way that you need to and and implement it for the beginning of the year, because you're already in the beginning of the year. But we did talk at the the commissioner and delegate meeting earlier about how the new state superintendent seems to be very open to this kind of feedback. Is that, is that a message? So, Marsha, I know you've you've been saying it...
She knows who I am.
Loud and proud in the past.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm an old Carroll County girl, and I'm for Carroll County.
But, I mean, just kind of with an overall understanding of, okay, we need the data by June, whatever, right?
May 1st.
May, okay, the end of May, like, what what is the date that...
That's all right, whatever the end of testing, we need it like three weeks later, you know? I was thinking, you know, we we were getting out early.
But it's just, you know, so the state is doing things with the data to, you know, verify accuracy, like, even if they could just release preliminary results earlier before they do all of their checks, like, if they if they figure something out later on, they can, they can do an addendum, but can we at least get some raw data much earlier so that we can start using it? I mean, is that a message that we can, I'm sure other...
They're watching us now, I will tell you, they're watching us.
I know that Dr. Wright has heard that that message from from many of the districts, and she comes to our superintendents' meetings once a month and just spends time with us as superintendents, and and we've talked about the importance of getting our data in a more timely manner, so she does understand that need.
Okay.
And she listens.
That's great. Because, you know, this is what it's all about. This is what we're supposed to be focusing on as a school system. Unfortunately, we've been focusing on Blueprint, which doesn't seem to put much focus on actual performance or results. But, I mean, this is really what it's all about, so. I know in the past, we've had work sessions and things to to go over it and try to understand, okay, what where do we think our biggest issues are, and what do you need from us as a board, right? Like, so what are the resources that you need so that we can go advocate for that, you know, with our friends across the street to to say, okay, this is, and Blueprint has made it even doubly that hard, but I think we need to kind of circle back and put the emphasis back on this.
Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Whistler.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, thank you so much for this information. I'd like to also acknowledge Dr. Wright. I'm really appreciative that she gave us all the data, nothing, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. It's a, it's a very refreshing perspective compared to her predecessor. And I am really appreciative of the fact that last year, we sat here, and I had, especially with math, I had people tell me that we're going to, 14th place is not good for algebra, we're going to put a lot of effort, and you did it. So I'm really proud of you for that. You know, I'm really, really impressed with, you know, the efforts that we made, the progress we made in algebra, the progress we've made with our African-American students and other some of our demographics, so I really appreciate your efforts there. It really paid off, and I I have confidence that you're going to do wonderful things with science of reading and 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 just making sure that we do better. And I also appreciate you acknowledging right up front that, yeah, we did better compared to a lot of other counties, but we still have a lot, a lot further to go, a lot more to do. So, again, just kudos to everybody for doing what you're doing. You're on the right track, and I'm just very grateful for for your progress so far to date.
Thank you, Mr. Whistler. I'm your biggest cheerleader, go to it. Thank you, I really appreciate it, and thank you all there in the back, too.
I actually had one more question.
Okay, whoops. I didn't, she didn't have her card up, sorry.
Sorry. I was wondering if it was possible to find a correlation between, like, this prep work, like, the MCAP and the science and the government, if there was a correlation with that with like standardized testing for like SATs or the ACTs? Because I know a lot of the counties that Maryland has, like Howard County, Montgomery County, they have really high SAT scores, and I was wondering if that was a correlation with like maybe our coursework with something that would help prepare our students for these standardized testings, especially now that we know colleges will eventually go back to test preferential.
So, thank you, and I don't know you hear us up here, but we're like, we have homework. That's a great idea, and we thank you very much for that. Thank you. Good idea. All right. Thank you all so much for all your time and effort. All right, and now we are going to move on to the school construction report. Dr. McCabe?
The monthly construction report provides status updates on ongoing projects under construction or in planning and design. Mr. Marx is here for any questions you may have this evening.
All right, Ms. Savigny, do you have any questions?
I don't want to give... I don't want to give Mr. Marx a heart attack, but I actually don't have any questions this evening.
Oh, brother, woo! We might make it till seven o'clock, you know? Some of you asked me what time, we're, we're on a roll now. Thank you.
That means a hurricane is coming.
All right. Now we will move on to the report on Curriculum Guide Proposed Revisions for 2024-2025.
Each year, we report on proposed revisions to our curriculum guides. These curriculum guides were revised at the end of the 2023-2024 school year, mostly over this past summer. These revisions will be implemented and evaluated during this school year. The final recommendations for these curriculum guides will be made next school year in September 2025. Mr. Wernick is here to highlight the proposed revisions and respond to any questions.
This is a great segue from our our data presentation to now. So, as we look at our data, we really have made some significant changes, modifications to our curriculum. And as you look at the chart, you can really see some of that in aligning our curriculum to new content standards that the state has has been looking at. We've also been ensuring that our teachers have scope and sequences within their programs of study and within what they teach, so that they can monitor when they're teaching, how they're teaching it, how many days a lesson should be, and so that we're giving them clear guidance on how to teach. The other piece is really looking at our assessments and ensuring that our assessments are aligned to our instruction. We always look at our local assessments, but this is the time of year, the summer, when we get our MCAP data, to look at how are our local assessments compared to our MCAP data, and ensuring that they are aligned to our instruction. So you can see there's multiple pages of really that deep diving into our curriculum and making those modifications and changes across all of our content areas. Were there any specific questions on any of the...
I knew I had read about DIBELS and the reading inventory, and there it is.
Yes. And Dr. Dorsey, there's actually, there's a new, it used to be DIBELS was out, and it's now called, no, you're fine, it's now called Akadance. So what they've looked at, they've mirrored it more to the science of reading, and so that we're we're looking at, it's still the same company, but we're looking at, instead of giving the DIBELS assessment, more of of the, what's called Akadance now, to ensure that we're we're targeting all those areas within the science of of reading.
Ms. Savigny, you have your card up.
Mr. Wernick, I did have just a couple of miscellaneous questions, but when looking at the the ELA assessments, Dr. Dorsey, you were talking about DIBELS being done away with, but we're talking about using new assessments, but I just wanted to make sure that it's new, it's not additive, right? Like, so I know one of the biggest complaints that, you know, my kids' ELA teachers had in elementary school that was, that it wasn't that we were doing something different, it was something, we were doing something more, right? So it's, you had to do phonics, and you had to do, like, and she would, she would sit there and list out, like, the the multiple different thing, ways that you needed to teach and different types of assessments, and it just became onerous, and and it wasn't necessarily helping the kids. And so I just wanted to make sure that, like, okay, it's like, we're teaching it one way or like, or having one assessment, not multiple.
Absolutely. So, years ago, you remember, it's classic reading inventory, SRI, became RI, and RI no longer is in existence, it's map growth. So what we've done is we've kind of just evolved over the years, looking at, we're we're not adding assessments, we're replacing assessments that either have evolved to give us better data or to really focus on and align with the new content standards that are out there across, not only this, our Maryland, but across the state. So, like, you look at science of reading, that's across the nation, just not across Maryland. And so really, those companies are now aligning their assessments to those larger focuses, and so that's what we're trying to look at, to ensure that we are measuring our students, not only to Maryland, but but norming them nationally.
Okay.
The next question I had was just about French I and II, and I know that French is no longer available at Westminster High School, but is is French available somewhere in the county? Or is it...
Yes.
It is.
Yes, mhm. And it depends on, you know, FTE, and also finding a teacher to be able to teach a a foreign language. Like, you know, we have Russian now being taught, which really, when you look at NSA, Like, you know, we have Russian now being taught, which really, when you look at NSA, that's one of the skills that they're looking for of students who they hire, or that to do internships. So we're bringing in as much as we can of different languages, but it truly is becoming harder to find language teachers. And so we do offer it, and again, with some of our languages, we're really trying to modernize what we use, so that our students are getting, you know, the most up-to-date instruction within those content areas.
And and just with the the health courses, I just wanted to make sure, so we're talking about revisions aligned with the Maryland Comprehensive Health Education Framework, just want to make sure that that also includes, like, the both versions, right? Like, so the CCPS version as well as?
Absolutely. And and most of that work, because we've brought that to the family life, this is really outside, it's all those units that are outside of the family life that really it's taught as as one, as one a content or one area. But also aligning as we need to, which we have a meeting coming up later in September that will bring anything that we've made changes to or plan to make, make changes to, to our Family Life Advisory Committee.
Great. And I did have one last question. When I was looking at issues in American society as the course title, we talk about using the social investigation model, and I was just curious about, oh, I'm sorry, it's on page three, kind of in the middle.
Sure. So that's really looking at researching. So you're looking at real-life, you know, sociological or societal issues and looking at research then. So no longer are we looking at, you know, contrived attributes, you're looking at what are the concerns in society, and then doing the research on it. So it's real-life, hands-on, bringing that content into the classroom and sharing that based on those, you know, those issues across, you know, across the the many years. It's not just focusing on one, but it's focusing on focusing across the years and what issues exist. And then what has been done to support those issues?
Okay, okay, that's helpful. I was just trying to understand, I actually did a Google search on it, and nothing came up, which I thought was quite odd.
Right.
Okay.
And that comes down to the local level, as far as looking at some issues and concerns, and, you know, I think it's good.
Absolutely. It's really about, you know, national state and then our local, you know, and how that plays in, how our local is really connected to the state and then to the national and vice versa, and how it's integrated, interwoven, you know, really looking at sociological demands of society.
You all have been busy this summer.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. And now I need a motion for the approval of a ward of bids.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigny. And this is the first time I've only ever seen one thing on the award of bids.
There is only one item on the award of bids tonight. At the, at the start of the year, the chiller failed at Northwest Middle School. We used emergency procurement to bring in a temporary chiller, so the award of bids confirms that purchase for the first month, and we're exploring the best solution for repairs, so the chiller will likely remain for an additional month.
Questions, comments? Sometimes you have to do what you have to do.
Yeah, well, that's what I was questioning. I was questioning when we would find out or when we'd know, but you're thinking within the month, we know.
All right. I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Wow. Approval, I need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Public Schools negotiators for 2024-2025.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Pataglia.
Each year in September, we bring for approval a list of our staff members who may be selected to serve or support the board's negotiation teams. The board approves the entire list, and then members are selected during negotiations as needed.
Comments, questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the personnel action items.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigny.
For the monthly personnel action items, there are eight new hires, one release from contract, one promotion, two leaves of absence, and one decrease in FTE.
Seeing no cards up, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of appointments.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Whistler. Thank you.
So this evening, I have one recommendation for appointment. Brian Shoemaker, from STEM Coordinator in Curriculum and Instruction, to the Acting Principal at Outdoor School.
Seeing no cards? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the MOU between the board and CCEA regarding low-performing school salary on the career ladder.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Dr. Dorsey.
We submitted our career ladder to the AIB last spring when the new master agreements were ratified and recently received feedback. This MOU is the one requirement we received for full approval for FY25. The MOU formally acknowledges that we understand the law requires a salary increase for NBC teachers at low-performing schools, even though we have no state-identified low-performing schools. So CCEA understood the AIB's request, and they have already approved the MOU.
Ms. Sevigny?
I do have some questions, just because this is, I'd like to try to understand the thresholds for low-performing schools. Like, even though we don't have any low-performing schools, do we have any that are close? What, you know, what is the possibility that one might cross the threshold?
Do you want to flip? I'll get a point out.
The exact metrics are slipping my mind presently, but no, we we're not on the radar for any low-performing schools as identified by the by the state. But I'll have to do a little fact-checking and some homework to to give you the exact criteria, but I know we're not.
We don't even have any.
We're three years in now.
Yeah.
Not even any that we're concerned about crossing a threshold?
No.
Okay. Because I was concerned about, like, so basically, if we had a school across the threshold, we'd suddenly have to pay every teacher in that school $7,000 more, and that's, that's a lot of money and that you can't budget for or plan for. What is that, Ms. O'Malley?
Not every teacher, just teachers with NBC.
Just teachers with NBC? Okay.
So the teachers with NBC get the $10,000 pursuant to the statute for having NBC. But if the teacher with NBC is in a low-performing school, of which we have none and don't anticipate having none, and which the AIB knows that we won't have any, in the event hypothetically that we did have an NBC teacher at the low-performing school, we would also have to give that NBC teacher an additional $7,000.
Okay. Okay. Got it. All right, that 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 helps. I was, I was just very concerned that we might get into a situation where we've suddenly got to pay a lot more money that we haven't budgeted for. So, okay, okay, that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of change order for design of pre-kindergarten additions to include Robert Moten Elementary. By Mr. Whistler. See, I was gonna say Steve, and I said, oh, no, I can't do that. No, it's Mr. Whistler. And by Dr. Dorsey. Oh, my golly days.
Tonight, I have a change order for you that is good news. The award for the design of Phase One of the Pre-K additions project was below adopted budget at a level sufficient to add another pre-K addition into the design. Approval of this change order will allow us to add Robert Moten to the design.
Okay, Ms. Sevigny.
That is good news, and we don't get a whole lot of that these days. I was just curious if we wanted to just take that benefit for now, rather, because we've, we've got significantly increased expenditures coming across on, you know, the cost of the Freedom additions and the Sykesville additions. I'm just curious about the the pros and cons of maybe just, okay, let's just hold on to the $116,000 and move it over to those areas.
Well, you you wouldn't so much hold on to it as it would just show up in the Phase Two request for the similar process. So we have three, three, right, three phases identified, three. There's Bill. We have three phases identified for the pre-K addition program. So if we don't take advantage of this and and capture Moten now, when we, when we look at Phase Two, it would be there anyway.
And what's the timing of Phase Two? I mean, I know that we eventually have to to do all of them.
Oh, no, here we go. Oh, hold on, people.
So Phase One, Phase One schools, we got design money from the county for this fiscal year. We started design on the Phase One for the five schools that the, were awarded at the June board meeting, or July board meeting, I'm sorry. The, those five schools have started design. The the folks on the instructional side would like to include Robert Moten. They already have a second pre-K at the school. They have the highest pre-K enrollment. They, they feel like that really should go as part of Phase One. It wasn't initially in the, in the RFP that we sent out, but they would like to include it. If it were not to be included in Phase One, it would become part of Phase Two. Phase Two would start design next July if the capital request is approved by the board to the county, and then the county then funds design funding in FY26 for Phase Two. That's all dependent upon, obviously, the CIP request getting approved and then the county giving us the funds. But that's the timeline in the CIP request, which is going to be before you in a, in a little bit.
Is it?
Okay.
Is it, is it correct if we assume that if we go and front this money now, 116,290, if we waited to Phase Two, that amount could be higher because of inflationary costs and whatnot? So it's better to pay it now rather than later when costs could go up?
It's, you know, it would be, it would be part of a request for proposals from Architects next spring, and then, yeah, obviously, yes, it's a year from now.
So we might be spending money if we do it now.
Yeah, leave it alone. That's, yeah. I think we should leave it alone.
I guess that, yeah, that makes some sense. I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with, and especially the fact that we have to make all of these additions, and there's no guidance yet from the state, right, about how much money they're going to be putting in. I feel like they, they're requiring this, they, they should be footing more of the money, but I feel like we shouldn't necessarily invest all that money until we understand what the state is going to be willing to fund. But at the same time, I understand that this, this cost, we have to do it eventually, and this cost might go up if we wait until next year, so.
All right.
Okay.
I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And now up for discussion, the proposed curriculum guide implementations for 2024-2025.
These are the curriculum guides that were revised at the end of the 2022-2023 school year, mostly in the summer of 2023. These revisions were implemented and evaluated during the 2023-24 school year. The attached chart summarizes the final revisions being recommended. The final recommendations are being brought to you this month for discussion. They will return next month for action. Mr. Wernick is here to highlight the recommendations and to respond to any questions.
Again, many of these were revisions that we worked on last summer, and we then, you know, talked to the teachers, piloted a lot of this, found that many of them are working in what was needed, and so we're bringing them now for discussion and then for approval for us to continue to use, you know, for the remainder this year and then throughout.
Do any board members? Chloe?
I guess I just have a question on the German one and two. So I saw that Spanish had it all the way up to Spanish four and AP Spanish, and I was wondering if German also had the same, I guess, units or like revisions for the upper-level German courses if we offered them at, like, sufficient number of schools?
So when we look at revisions, not every unit needs it or not, you know, like, German one and two may need it this year, and then next year it might be German four, you know? So we really look at what is needed at the time, and we focus on those. We knew that, like, French really needed it this year, and so we focused on that. Last year, we really focused on German, because that was something that we had not focused on for many years. So we, we look at and continuously have a cycle of updating, especially our foreign, foreign language courses, because we know we can't do that each summer, so so we look at like a four-year rotation, if that makes sense.
And we'll be voting on this next month?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no other questions, we will move on to discussion on proposed high school program of studies for 2025-2026. Ms. Pataglia, you grab that fast.
I did.
Hold on, we gotta let her?
Yep.
These are changes and updates proposed to the high school program of studies for the next school year. This document summarizes the general revisions, courses being discontinued, and courses being added, as well as courses being updated. The high school program of studies is being brought to you this month for discussion. It will return next month for action, and Mr. Wernick is here to highlight the proposed changes and respond to any questions.
As you look at the program of study, many of the updates and added courses are in AP. We are trying to, as we look at our AP pathway for our students and as being college and career-ready, we want to ensure that we have enough courses within the the AP category that they're, they're able to take diverse and and different courses. So you see that some word gets discontinued, and really it was just a name change or an update that we added to a different course. The other area that we're focusing on, as you can see, are many of our special education classes are alternative classes. We're trying to align them to our general education curriculum as much as possible to ensure those students are getting as much as the content through the general education alignment that they can within their alternative classrooms. They may not receive as in-depth instruction, or their content may not be as much, but we're trying to include those content errors that really are those, those power indicators to support them.
Sorry, I killed a bug. Sorry, I killed a bug. Go ahead, Ms. Pataglia.
So I did have a couple of questions. I had just, just a couple ideas of things. Fire and EMS. It's been a while since the school system had that type of class that was offered to students as a career path. Do you foresee any way of that coming back? Or, I mean, it's, we talk about, you know, creating our own teachers, you know, I think fire and EMS is really important, considering now we do have paid fire and EMS in Carroll County.
So when we look at our curriculum and our program of study, it's aligned to the content and the standards at MSD-E, on the courses at MSD-E. So they're specifically out of MSD, not saying that we can't offer courses. As we do, we partner with other, you know, institutions to support the fire and EMS program. But to say that we have a, a program that is aligned to our state standards, it just does not exist at this point.
And I don't, and I, and I would want to double-check this, but if my memory is correct, I do believe, I'm not sure that that program meets some of the criteria established at, through CTE. But I, you know, obviously, don't get me wrong, it's a wonderful program and provides a valuable service to our community, but I want to go back and check, but I do remember there's also, I think there's some sort of glitch in, in our requirements under our CTE programs, but I want to double-check that before, before I alarm anyone, but I think that was part of it when the transition was made.
Okay. And then potentially, you know, again, looking at the requirements for career and tech. I mean, again, we are constantly hearing that, you know, you have kids who, we, we are doing a disservice to kids who are not great academic learners. They have a 2.0. And, yeah, they apply for career and tech, and those are the hands-on kids. And welding or HVAC or auto mechanics would be ideal for them. And I totally understand, like, biomed, nursing, physical therapy, like, I totally understand that, like, that you need to have good grades, and your attendance needs to be on par. But when, when I am hearing, you know, that kids that have 4.0 GPAs are in welding, and they don't plan on using that as any way in a career, is just to get out of high school for half a day, that's a problem. It, it's not right. I mean, you got these kids, they want to do something with their lives, and they say, like, I can't, and then they're, they're discouraged, because they're like, well, what's the point of me even trying, because obviously I can't be anybody? So I think we need to look at ways to identify those kids. And I get it's hard, and I know we have limited And I get it's hard, and I know we have limited space, but we should be able to identify the kids who are the college kids that want to take those good college classes and take that certification onward versus the kids who need that trade.
And we, we did add that question to our application process to ensure that this was something that they were really looking at, you know, getting into, using whatever talents that they've received from career in tech in, in the workforce. And so that was a suggestion that we took last year. We'll continue to brainstorm and look at our application process. You know, we know that our programs fill quickly. That is, you know, it, it's one of the gems that we have in Carroll County. And so, you know, we would love to find ways to grow our career in tech, and, and, you know, we toss around ideas, but we'll continue to, you know, take that feedback back and see what we can do to ensure that those students that are looking for a program are able, you know, are able to get in.
I mean, I even think maybe our guidance counselors, you know, they can interview the student. Like, I mean, in, in individual schools, they already meet with the kids anyway, you know, career plans, et cetera, following up on what they're going to be doing their senior year. It's a perfect opportunity to kind of do like a mock interview per se and be like, okay, I've seen that you applied for career in tech, let's talk about it. And then they can see that, you know, okay, so you got a 2.0 GPA, okay, well, yeah, you would probably be better on a hands-on type program versus the 4.0 going, well, I just want welding for, just to take it. And obviously, that guidance counselor could identify that. And I...
Always good. We, we, I know our counselors work closely with our students to have a backup plan, identify a, a primary program, and then maybe even a secondary program, that if they, they don't get into their first program of choice, there's still an option there. The, the, the great thing is that our programs at the Tech Center have, have grown and become very, very popular, but there is a finite number of seats, and, and we've used a mathematical scoring to determine what students get into the program. And that, that is sad. I mean, that, that, we'd, we'd never want to turn away a student who has the interest and has done the work to be able to get into the program. But that's the, the, the difficulty is, you know, is how do we determine, I mean, we've, we've historically determined based upon the rubric, that's a part of that application, which has a lot of different factors when a, when a program becomes full. So that's the difficult piece. So the, the great thing is our programs are, are, are getting more and more attention, more and more popularity, more and more students are, are gravitating to them, but there's a finite number of seats. So aside from increasing the number of seats, we can always, like Mr. Wernick said, take a look at the admissions process. We did add that, that based on the feedback of the Board, I believe it was last school year, the year before.
This year.
In which we, we added a, a scoreable question is, you know, related to, you know, the, the, you know, how interested are you in this, in this field down the road? But no doubt about it, the last thing we want to do is turn away a student who's very interested in, in a program, but the difficulty is there's just a limited number of seats.
And I would just add to that, that, you know, we need to make sure that our, our process, our application process and selection process is objective. And that, that can be hard, too. Because most systems either have a process like we have, where it's kind of like a formula, or, which is very objective, or they do a lottery, which is very objective, that, you know? It's difficult. While I understand, and I've been thinking about the process of maybe getting a counselor involved or something like that, when you do that, not only can it be a, a time and a workload issue, but it can also bring subjectivity into the mix. And there can be a lot of emotion for parents and students around whether the student gets into career in tech, or whether they don't, whether they're waitlisted. And to put a staff member in a position where they were the ones who maybe interviewed a child and made the decision about whether they were right for career in tech or wrong for career in tech, could, could put them in a precarious position with, with our community, with our parents. So I fully agree with you that, that we want to do the best job we can of making sure that the students who are, who are going to most benefit from career in tech for their careers get in. The process to, to get that done is a hairy process. But I agree with what Mr. Wernick and, and what Mr. Shokne said, and, and we will continue to go back and look at that and determine how are there things that we can add objectively to the application process that we already have?
And I will say, your heart's in the right place, but our guidance counselors, we need more, and they cannot do a thousand interviews, and I do understand what you're saying. And then, on the other hand, I know we've had students go through, and I can think of one right off the top of my head. She took cosmetology, she ended up being a phys ed teacher, and now she does both jobs. So that, that's the other flip side, and we try to do our best, and I know it's difficult. But that would be really tough on, on, on our guidance counselor. That, that would be an impossible task because they are so thin now. You know, we can't do that. So. Do we have any other comments? Ms. Savigny?
I did have some questions about the AP revisions. Mr. Wernick, you were saying that a, a lot of them were being revised to increase the, the opportunities. And I was curious, do we track, and in the past, we had always said it was a problem, like kids would sign up for the AP classes but not necessarily take the exam? Or what is the, so what is the percentage of kids that take the AP exam, and what's the percentage of kids that get a four, or a three or better, or a four or better? Like, are, are those things that we track, and are we being successful in preparing our kids through those AP classes?
Absolutely. And we do track that. What we're seeing is because now our AP assessments are free, as in, you know, because of dual enrollment, that we're finding that more of our students are taking them, and taking multiple assessments, because it doesn't limit them as long as they're in the AP course. And we also find that our teachers do a fantastic job of preparing our students. You know, it may be that it's additional outside of the classroom time, it may be that they're holding flex hours with them, you know? And so we find that they are, are doing a great job. And that since our many colleges across the nation have really bought into AP scores and allowing them then to count as credits within their, within their college, not just in Maryland, a lot of our students are trending to take AP courses because it supports them, and they don't have to take as many college, as many college courses because they have those credits coming in with them. So yes, absolutely, we do look at that and monitor who takes them and how many.
Okay. So we do track what the, the passing scores are, or what the, what's the percentage of passing scores? And is it, is it generally increasing? Is it decreasing? Is it steady?
It has. Ms. Lilly, Sharon Lilly actually looks at that and provides us with each year with that, and we actually had more test takers this year, and we increased our scores as well. I mean, it didn't increase greatly, it was in, within a percentage point, but still having more test takers, sometimes you would look at that the scores would, your average score would decrease, and it actually has increased overall. And there were, you know, many more test takers. I, I don't have it off the top of my head, but like over, over a hundred and some more test takers in, in the assessments overall.
So that's a double benefit. There's more test takers and the percentage of passing scores is going up.
Exactly. And, and I think that what students are realizing is it's important to pass that because then it passes on savings to them in, in college.
Right. Yeah. My, I'm lucky enough that my daughter started her freshman year with 30 credits under her belt, so.
Absolutely.
But, and I was curious about the, the AP Capstone diploma. What, what does that do? Like, what is, how is that recognized? Is that something that's, how does that apply differently than other AP credits?
Sure. So if you get the Capstone diploma, it's actually a recognition on your diploma, taking so many AP courses as well as passing the AP assessments, and it's actually recognized so that colleges will recognize it, and that the state of Maryland now recognizes it as, as a special bonus within your, within your diploma.
That's one of our pathways, too. That's the, the culminating goal of the, of the, of the, I almost said dual enrollment, of the AP pathway. Just like the associates for the dual enrollment, your CTE industry certification, that is kind of, that is the, the end product that we are, that we are getting students toward for that pathway, for the AP pathway.
Okay. But it doesn't necessarily apply to all AP coursework, right? Like, you have to pass seminar and research, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's a, it, as, and we're still in the process of building these, but we'll have a very prescribed pathway, because again, students pick one of, of three pathways if they're not in the support pathway, but this will be their, their end goal. Like with dual enrollment, I would envision that if a student's not into AP pathway, maybe they're in the dual enrollment pathway, they would still have opportunities to take AP courses, just not to the extent that students pursuing the, the full pathway would.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to understand whether there was some additional, like prestige or whatever, you know, like is that, does that help kids get into colleges, you know, if they have the diploma versus just, let's say they have five completely unrelated AP exams, but they didn't pass, they didn't take or pass Lang and Research? Does that mean, is that, is there a better path to take?
I, I can't speak to what colleges look at, but I would assume the perseverance of taking those courses and then being able to pass them. AP is at the college level, same as, you know, your dual enrollment. So I would see them as looking at it as a benefit that that student was able to persevere, was successful, and then should be successful in, you know, in the college setting. But since this is new for us in Maryland, it's very exciting to see how that's going to contribute to our student success, and, and what colleges our students plan to attend and get accepted in.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. There's a bug up here. It's a nan, it's flying around my head and driving me absolutely crazy. So let's get on, so I can get out of here. Yes. Go ahead, Chloe.
All right. So I wanted to say I'm part of the Capstone program, and, yeah, so I took seminar last year with Lang concurrently, and this year I'm taking Research. So, I mean, it's, it's not really like a English class, even though it's an English credit. It's very like research-based, where you write a paper, you do a research report, and you do an oral presentation and oral defense. And I think, I think it's a great program. I passed seminar really well, I got a five, and I think our teachers, just all across the county, are really, really prepared for this, even though it's a very, fairly new subject. And it also combines a lot of subjects outside of English. So my ultimate, like, culmination project in AP seminar last year was about politics and then jail reform, because I had two of them. So it was a very, like, very good, like, English pathway, I think. But I did also have a question on that, where I know we're expanding AP seminar to our English 10, like, to our sophomores, and I was wondering if there was a difference between the English 10 course and just the regular AP Capstone seminar course that we added to our program?
Yeah. So as we're looking at AP, low end, actually, AP College Board has said that that is the, the route that you should go, the pathway, because it allows students to have a greater autonomy to then look at their courses when they get into 11th and 12th grade with their AP credits to then expand. And so it, it's sort of waiting to take that, we're actually looking at having it in, in English 10, or, or down in, I'm sorry, in 10th grade. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
It does. So just like for clarification purposes, the English 10 AP seminar class is only for sophomores?
Yes, exactly. The AP 10 is that what we're looking at is having them then that only for sophomores. And then that's actually then, you know, instead of it having that as juniors take it, sophomores not take it, and then it, like I said, it broadens the, the courses that they're able to take as a junior and, and senior.
Okay. Because I know that this year we have like sophomores, juniors, and seniors taking the same AP seminar course. So I was just wondering if this English 10 AP seminar would allow us to have like greater, like, categories of students? I guess we'd have just one English 10 for AP seminar, and then one for like our upper, like, juniors and seniors who are willing to take it as well.
Yes. But our hope is that most of our students, when they're looking at that pathway, that they take it in 10th grade, because that's really what College Board says, that, that, that is the springboard, beginning to take AP courses, you know, in their junior and senior year. We also know that as students are looking at maybe dual enrollment courses and, and other areas, if they follow the AP pathway, they can also then take other dual enrollment courses, and it doesn't obstruct their pathway, you know, as, as their junior or senior.
Okay. So by shifting this to like our sophomore grade, are we incorporating AP language into that progressive, like, flow for English as a 11th grader, or do we want, like, I guess juniors to start taking AP Research earlier?
We want them to take AP Research earlier, but we also haven't developed our path, our true pathway yet for AP. We're actually looking at that now. And so what we wanted to do is we're, we're following the guidelines of College Board and starting to align it, but we haven't developed our true pathway, just like dual enrollment, we haven't developed our true pathway for dual enrollment. So that, that's, you know, forthcoming. But yeah, what we're trying to do is ensure that we're providing the courses as soon as possible for our students so that then they can continue to, you know, experience the pathway that they want to, and then dabble into other pathways, be it, maybe it, it could be CTE as well, or maybe some dual enrollment courses. It just depends on what they're looking at, you know, as, as their pathway.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Wernick. And now we will move on to the proposed school calendar for 2025, 2026.
In September each year, I bring you a proposed calendar for the subsequent school year. The calendar then goes out for public comment for a period of two months before returning for your action. The calendar I am proposing for 2025, 2026 includes the first student day, the first student school day is proposed to begin after Labor Day on September 2nd, 2025. Four emergency closing days are built into the calendar. Winter break is proposed to begin on Wednesday, December 24th, 2025, with students returning on Monday, January 5th, 2026. Spring break is proposed to be Thursday, April 2nd, 2026, through Tuesday, April 7th, 2026. And the last day of school for students is proposed to be Friday, June 12th, 2026. And before I turn it over, I'll just add that you've heard tonight about the need for professional development. We are taking this year to really determine how we can offer more and more professional development within the school day as we have it now. We're going to make the most of the time we currently have. However, as we look, as we move through this year and look at our students' achievement, there may come a point in time where we discuss the calendar and maybe the need to increase the professional development time that we have, and, and having that impact the calendar in some way. So we haven't done that up until this point, but there may come a time that we may have to do that depending on the results that we get using the very limited amount of time that we have for teacher professional development.
Dr. Dorsey?
Did we have more time for PD when we started prior to Labor Day?
Yes.
I know at one point we set some guidelines as far as the calendar is concerned, so it sounds like it might be a good time to, to relook at those guidelines that we set. Because I keep hearing comments that, yeah, you know, if we start before Labor Day, that last week in August, like we had done years prior. Again, it sort of sets the tone for the year. A lot of other systems are beginning during that time, and we've talked about how sports teams have already started, and, I mean, I think we had looked at a number of factors that sort of played into it. So I would, I would certainly be open to reviewing that. And as you're saying, it would certainly serve the benefit as well of adding some PD time that is desperately needed. Because, I mean, when you look at the number of days that supervisors have with the staff members, the days that principals really have, I mean, it's not a lot.
It's not a lot. The other way that for a while we, we met the need for professional development was those early dismissal days, and, and we've cut them out. And I think that as we look, as we look into the future, years down the road, the changes we have to make in the school schedule due to blueprint will solve some of these issues. I do really think we'll be able to fix... I do really think we'll be able to fit more professional development into the workday, the teacher workday, as the teachers have more planning time and as we implement that blueprint. But between now and then, we're finding it more and more difficult to really meet the needs of our teachers, especially our new teachers and our non-certified teachers.
Ms. Pataglia?
Does anyone happen to remember what the survey we had several years ago had came back? Was the majority before or after Labor Day?
After. That's why we, that's why we set that up.
But again, that has been a number of years, so I don't know if it's time.
It was several years ago, but yeah, that was a factor. And that's why we did it, because that's what the parents wanted.
And I'm, I mean, I know even last week, even it was like the first week of school, I still saw a lot of parents were on vacation and their kids didn't start until this week. So I mean, we have, it's hard, because I even, you know, saw where teachers were like a couple more days. Like they enjoyed that time off before coming back. But I totally understand, like, you know, professional development, we are going to need to look into and especially with Blueprint, and it's hard. And I totally understand that.
And, you know, again, it's not, there's nothing of that in this calendar that I'm proposing. I'm just kind of dropping it as.
Going forward, we might have to.
Yeah, it's just a discussion point we may have to have for the future.
On a personal note, it's nice for Ms. Sevigny and I to see what time our children will be graduating that year. So that's good. I'm marking in the calendar now.
All right, Chloe.
Obviously, I can't speak towards the professional development, like necessary things, but I think for students in general, especially for seniors, it's very helpful to start after Labor Day, especially when the Common Application opens around like August 1st. So we have that extra time to start working on our college essays, our applications, one more time, like studying just one more time to take that very last SAT that is conveniently in August. Because especially as student athletes, when, I do understand, because we already start school, I mean, sports and games, we should probably start school. But that just gives, I think, student athletes more pressure to finish their college apps earlier when they have less time already in the summer. Because I have seen so many students already finish their essays or they have finished their college applications fully, just in general, before coming into the school year. And that just gives them the letters of recommendation to ask their teachers. And just that by itself, I think, was a very helpful tool for students to have that extra month to prepare for college applications before they had to go with their course load, with APs, with just regular homework, student athlete obligations. So just as a student perspective, I think after Labor Day is better for seniors.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we'll be working for for the 25, 26 years, that Labor Day is super early.
It's very early, yes.
The first day of the month is Labor Day.
Yep, that's correct.
Anything else, Ms. Sevigny?
A quick question about just the professional development days. I know that, you know, we look to build those in across the year, but is there anything to stop us from making one, you know, during the week before school starts? Does that benefit anyone or is it not as useful if it's not during the school year when you're already in the classroom with the kids?
Yeah, we've had a lot, a lot of conversation about that. And, you know, the new teachers come back one week, then regular teachers come back the week after. And that week, they, I mean, their schedule is just filled that week. And the supervisors do get one day in that week with them for just professional development. And then we looked at the other days that are professional development days within the calendar, and we strategically placed them, one in October and one in the spring, so that we could kind of get at some different, some different looks at data and then when would be a good time to bring everybody together and look at the instruction that needs to be done based on the data that comes in. So right now, we feel like, we feel comfortable with where we have those professional development days. But that's something we're always discussing, how to best use the time we have. Plus, we use a lot of the time that principals have for faculty meetings. That time is used not just for things like administrivia, but for time for professional learning as well.
Yeah, and that first week back, I mean, there are so many staff meetings.
Jam, it is jam-packed.
Safety committee used to have to meet during that first week back. And a lot of schools now at the elementary level have gotten to the point where we've had our orientations during that first week back as well. So it's like every day is pretty much taken, you know.
All right, any other comments? All right, let's move on. All right, and now we have a discussion on the proposed FY26 capital budget and the FY27 through FY31 capital improvement plan request.
In September each year, we present a proposed CIP. Following discussion, the CIP is released for public comment before returning in October for board action. With board approval in October, the CIP request will be submitted to both the county and state for consideration in their respective annual processes. The cover sheet provides some highlights. I'm also going to ask Mr. Kane to go over those highlighted areas. And I would say in general, the changes in budget estimates as we move forward with projects is attributable to three things. A change in the state local cost share for us. Changes to square footage as projects have moved from concept into design. And escalating costs over time in the construction industry. I'll ask Mr. Kane to fill in the details and respond to any questions.
So I'm just going to hit the highlights from the cover sheet and then I'm sure you'll have questions. But for the four kindergarten additions that are part of the FY26 request, the big thing to remember is those four projects are well along in design. We're actually in the construction document phase. We started designing them last year. Last year's CIP request, we were at the very early stages of design. So the designs are really fully fleshed out. There's a lot more details. And we've had two rounds of construction estimates from cost estimators that work in the industry. So these budgets in this year's request for these four kindergarten additions are really aligned with the cost estimates from the construction cost estimator. There are also, obviously, every year we do a state request, the parameters change. They change the cost per square foot. Our cost share percentage actually went down this year based on their calculations. It went from 57% to 54% this year. And basically, as it, as design progresses, you know, square footage has changed sometimes, which affects the state formula. But all four of them are different in the impact to the actual request, but that's why they changed. I know it's, you know, a lot of times you see that first number and everyone believes, oh, that's the budget, it's never going to change. Well, when we start designing, you know, that budget estimate originally was based on an assumption on scope. As we start designing, sometimes those parameters change. So that, that kind of is why those four have changed. For Carol Springs HVAC replacement, that project, we asked for construction funding from the state last year. It was not funded because the state ran out of money before they got to that, where it was on our priority list. They did fund a couple of other HVAC replacement projects for us, but that one didn't get funded. So that's been deferred a year. So the cost estimate went up because it's, you know, cost escalation happens. And then the other factor with Carol Springs is we did receive two HVAC bids this past winter, which were higher than expected. So we've kind of relooked at our parameters as far as how much escalation we assume and that, those type of things. With the Freedom Elementary addition, the overall budget really didn't change because, you know, the, where we are in early stages of design, we're still in the same ballpark as far as square footage and assumptions. But the state, the state parameters changed. So there is a change in the state share in our FY26 request. For Sykesville Middle, that project request is different. It did, the request in the, in the CIP is higher than last year's. And that's really mainly based on, there's now, a planning committee was formed. The board approved an educational specification for the project. The architect has started very early in design. But in order to meet that educational specification, it does require additional square footage than where we were last year based on kind of the assumptions in the feasibility study. So it's about an additional, I think, 5, 5,200 square feet where we are right now in design based on the architect's estimate. So that leads to the additional cost. The additional cost is shared with the state. The state will participate in the additional square footage. But that's really what's driving that increase to Sykesville Middle. And then the last, you know, kind of lumped together, the pre-kindergarten addition project. Originally last year, before we had a scope study performed by an architect, we made assumptions as far as we were going to do 15 elementary schools. We assumed about 18, 50 square feet per addition. When you build a pre-K classroom, that's just kind of the assumption is that's about how much you would need. So we assumed 28,000 square feet over two phases in last year's CIP. We did, we did the scope study. We got an actual architect to look at how they would add on to the schools. And some schools, it's very difficult to just add the addition on. So in some, some schools, we had to actually renovate spaces to become a pre-K room. And then we had to build in addition to replace those areas, which then increases the amount of square footage to provide that pre-K. So that square footage where we are now is approximately 8,000 square feet more than the original 28,000 for all 15 schools. So and then because of the increased costs and likelihood of getting state funding lined up with where we are and managing that many additions, we've broken into three phases, basically instead of the two phases. So that, you know, the idea was five schools per year. Based on the decision earlier and the need at Robert Moten, we're looking at six schools in Phase One designing. And then it would be four in Phase Two, and then the last five would be in Phase Three. That's kind of a general overview of the major changes in the FY26 CIP request. I'm sure there's probably questions, so I'd be.
I'm going to let Ms. Pataglia go first, then Ms. Sevigny, and then Dr. Dorsey.
I just have two things. The first one, I see Liberty High School modernization is one here, which is good because I think it does something that needs to be looked at. When would they be probably forming that planning committee? And when could possibly Mr. Whistler or myself sign up to be on that?
What about me?
Well, if you want to be on the planning committee for Liberty too.
So in the, in the current, in the current request before you, we'd be asking for money to hire an architect to do a feasibility study to look at what are the options to modernize Liberty High? They would look at, you know, renovating and potentially adding on to it, similar to how we modernized Career and Tech. Or they would probably also look at replacement, building a replacement school like East Middle. They'd probably look at multiple options. Generally, we have traditionally not formed the planning committee until we get a commitment from the county for design funding. In other words, if they gave us feasibility study funding, but they didn't commit to planning money, we could form a committee and start the EdSpec. But a good example is we did a planning committee in 2006 or '07 for the Career and Tech Center modernization. We were working on an EdSpec and then we found out, oh, they're not going to do it. But the committee spent a lot of time and effort, and that all work went away because they pivoted and moved away from it. And then we had to form a new planning committee by the time we got to the, to the actual, oh, they're going to actually fund it. So we try to wait until we know that the county's going to commit to design funding. So we probably, which would probably be, the feasibility study, if they fund that next fiscal year, we'd start, we'd hire an architect to have them look at that. And then if the county were to commit to design money in the following fiscal year, '27, we'd probably form the committee sometime prior to that beginning of the fiscal year, probably sometime that spring, so that by the time the architect's on board, we've kind of started the process. You know, it's, it varies specifically because sometimes we, when, when we get commitment from our funding partners is never, sometimes it's late, sometimes it's early. It just kind of depends on when, when we know.
Right.
But yeah, we, it's, it would certainly be exciting to, to get a commitment and start looking at that because I think everyone can agree it's probably a time to look at that.
And I'm glad to see that there's going to be a paving project in Manchester. Even though I won't be there anymore, I'm glad to see that's occurring because I'm parking lots of hot mess. But I'm very thankful that you guys, you know, you're keeping up with looking at what needs to be done in our schools, so we don't have an issue where we're doing Band-Aid projects and we're letting things go, you know, as had happened in the past. So I'm just really glad to see that, you know, every year you guys are checking the schools, you're grading the schools, you know, making sure if something needs to be adjusted or something can be pushed back. I'm very thankful for you guys doing that and I'm glad that it's something that many, not many systems do, and I'm glad we do.
Ms. Sevigny?
I'd like to echo, let me turn that off. I'd like to echo some of those comments, although at the same time, I'm choking on the $143 million price tag for Liberty High School. And curious about, like, so if we did, when we do the feasibility study, I mean, it seems, it's an astronomical amount of money to spend for a modernization. I mean, at that point, do you start looking at green space, you know, and starting, starting fresh? But that's something that would come out of the feasibility study, right?
Yeah, so the, right now, the assumption on the, in the capital request is just a square footage assumption of, you know, what a typical high school. You know, our last high school was Manchester Valley, which has a square footage, which was based on our prototype, which was Winters Mill and Century. The assumption is we try to provide about the same amount of square feet for Liberty. That budget is basically that many square feet times what it, we think it'll cost per square foot in the future, and that's what it comes out to be. And that's kind of a ballpark. A replacement school is probably going to be around there, a renovation, depending on if, phasing, if you have to go longer than two years of construction, could actually even be more costly. So, you know, that, that ballpark, that number is the best we can know right now. It's just based on a square feet times the cost per square foot. And, you know, it, it seems to be an astronomical number, but it's just the nature of, you know, the inflation of money. You know, 20 years ago, a high school costs 40 or 50 million, and over time, it just goes up. There are high schools being built in the state that are closer to 200 million currently. Now, they build bigger high schools than we do, but it's, it's kind of the nature of, of the business. And the, you know, the cost of everything has gone up.
Maybe we should ask Ms. Bergman in the back where she said they found that money for Landstown. I'm going to figure out where we can find the money. Because it's a, it's just a, it's a very large price tag. So I'm sure that we're going to have to start, and I'm sure you are front-running that with the commissioners and Ted and trying to.
Yeah.
Understand how that fits in, because I'm looking at the, you know, we had said when we, when we started calculating the FCI score, right? Like, we wanted that to be, to remain relatively consistent over time. And that was going to require a certain slug of money every year. And at the time, we were talking about that being 45-ish million a year. And now I'm looking at these, these numbers, it's more like 100 million each year is what we're going to be requesting. I mean, that's, that's a huge step change. And I think that we're going to have to have some pretty tough discussions with the commissioners just to, to set expectations properly, right? We don't, but at the same time, I don't know that the, the funding is going to be there for that large of an increase in expenditures. Totally agree that we need to keep moving on the FCI. Like, it has served us well over the last 10. Like, it, it has served us well over the last ten years, right? Like, we've kind of gotten back on track, but-
And that-
-but it's changing at a very fast pace.
Right. The, the reason, the reason our FCI stayed relatively flat or came down a little bit is because we did East Middle and Career and Tech-
Right.
-without doing, which were, you know, in its day, when we talked about those astronomical costs, how will we afford it? But like, that's, that's where we are. We have over four million square feet of building. The cost to maintain that is not cheap by any means, and if we don't do large, whole-scale projects like that, the FCI will continue to go up. The, the CIP request before you, by the end of it, this, the FCI would be thirty-six percent, which is around where we are now. That, that's based on Liberty High's modernization being in, and being funded. If that doesn't happen, the FCI will be above, I believe it'll be above forty percent by the end of the six-year period, so.
Right. No, I totally understand, and, you know, I was trying to help lead the charge with the commissioners with the, the FCI score and everything. And I think that, you know, we've established a good process and agree, we, we got to do-
Right.
-a large project, basically, every year, in order to stay on top of it. But I just think-
We'd take every few years, but, but yeah, I mean, forty schools, you know, various ages, really, to, to, if you did one a year, you're getting to them in forty years. If you did one every other year, it's eighty years before you get to every school. So, it's-
Right.
It's, it's a difficult challenge. And I would say the county has been, you know, recently, you know, the county has been mostly meeting our requests. The, the bigger concern for us right now is, is the state. Not that the state hasn't been giving us money, but they've kind of held their amount of capital funding around the same for about ten years now. And because of talks at the state about budgetary issues with the operating budget mainly, but they, they're, they're not looking at increasing it over the next few years, which means, you know, when they give us eight million for projects ten years ago, it was, you know, did so many projects, eight million three years from now is, you know, obviously you can't do as much as you did ten, ten to fifteen years ago. So, that, that's a challenge for us now. We, we're trying to work with our partner at the state to advocate for more money, and they are, but that's our bigger concern, I think, going forward in the future, is, is the state, you know, really ramping up the amount of money they put into the capital budget.
Right. And it looks like what we're anticipating the state's share to be on that Liberty-
Right.
-is, is lower than it would typically be, have been in the past, right?
Uh, it, it's, it's around, it's based on the same parameters. It, it would, they would be participating similar to the way they participated at East Middle, as far as their amount of square footage they participate in. So, you know, it's, I think in the sixty, sixty-six.
Yeah, so the sixty-six million out of the one forty-three, so it's like forty-six percent overall.
Yeah, typically, they're in, total project cost, the state's typically in that roughly fifty percent, but it varies on every project because of all the parameters that go into it. But, but it's in, in that range. But when you look at the, you know, if we build a high, a high school in two or three years, and we're, we're needing to get all of our state money in that time to pay the bills, well, you know, twenty-two million from the state over, this is over three fiscal years, which is, you know, that doesn't line up with the, with the invoices we get from the contractor.
Right.
So, like, if they take six years to fund it, because that's all they can give us, they're only giving us nine, ten million a year or whatever, then it becomes a problem we have to solve with our local partner about, can we cover those upfront costs to get reimbursed from the state?
Right. Right. I say all that to say, we probably need to start front-running those conversations with the commissioners. And in the same, same vein, I was looking at the, the four elementary, the kindergarten additions at the four schools. I know we had a discussion maybe back in, I want to say, May or June, we're talking about, we had kind of trimmed back on, the, the estimates were coming in higher than the original budgets, and we were trimming some square footage in certain places and things to try to get back to the original estimates. And I know we had gotten pretty close, right? Like, I think we, we were maybe three hundred thousand more than, than the original estimates, but now it looks like we're back up to maybe being two million higher for the, the four.
Yeah, the big, the big one, the big struggle is obviously Friendship Valley, and that one, the other ones are relatively close to where we were. We did trim square footage in all of them during the, the design, but we did get to a point where trimming additional square footage would be, be removing classrooms. If, and it's, it's certainly still on a board, if the board got the, you know, this and wanted to alter the request, or the construction document plans and the cost estimate that's going to come with those later this year, that, that's still a possibility. You, you can cut scope out, but you can say, we're not going to do a second, another pre-K classroom. We're only going to build the two kindergarten, and we're not giving you a second, you know, that's a possibility. But we, we kind of held the line on design as far as cutting as much square footage with, keeping that core intent of the projects. And this is kind of the rubric, you know, the, the calculations, this is kind of where we are with the cost estimates. Again, they're all estimates, the cost estimator told us when they gave us the design development estimates, small additions like this are very hard to estimate. They, they, they don't have a lot to compare across the state. There haven't been a lot of them done recently. There were certainly a lot done when full-day kindergarten happened, but recently, there haven't been a lot of these small additions. And the variance between projects can be so great, dependent upon each school's unique, you know, the boiler at this school can handle additional ones, but this one can't, so you have to, you know, figure out how to heat the extra classrooms. There's all kinds of things. This one, you got to move a sewer line to build the addition next to the kindergarten rooms, and this one, you don't. You know, it, it's just a difficult thing to estimate. This is our best, kind of, the, the cost estimators, who's hired to do it, is a professional, and it says, this is what I think it's going to cost. These budgets align with those. You know, ultimately, until we bid the project and get the market to tell us what they cost, we won't actually know what they cost, but-
Or the surprise giant rock field in a parking lot.
Yeah. Anything else, Ms. Savigny?
No.
Okay, Dr. Dorsey.
Yes, I just had a question concerning the planning for William Winchester.
Okay.
Looks like we're looking at the pre-K additions, but yet we're also looking at the school modernization.
The modernization, yes.
So, the timing, how do you oversee all of that?
So, yeah, so we are, the, the school, the school is one of the, one of the targeted schools for getting a, you know, having a second pre-kindergarten class because of its school population and, and the geographic area. So, if, we felt strongly that they need that second pre-K classroom. You know, when we get to a point where we are looking at the modernization, obviously we'll do another feasibility study, and the architect will look at what makes sense, you know, renovating or replacing. It's, it is possible in the future that they could look at it and say it makes the most, it's going to make the most sense educationally and cost efficient to build a replacement. And it, it's a possibility, but, you know, delaying the pre-K addition until we got funding for the modernization could, you know, we talked about, you know, whether we're going to get funding for Liberty or not. It could, sometimes modernizations wait decades from the time they show up in the capital plan, so it's a-
I know, I mean, you, it's already noted here that certainly it would be sixty years old-
Yeah.
-at the time of modernization.
You know, that's-
But then if you're just adding a pre-K to it prior to-
Yeah.
-taking a look at it, I mean, it just-
It's, it's-
You question whether we're wasting that money, so to speak.
It's always the dilemma with, you know, not having funding control of your own capital, because you're, we're dependent upon partners and to fund it. So, without getting their commitment on really a long-term funding plan, and knowing what they will fund, won't fund, it's difficult to plan out the next six, seven, eight years effectively sometimes, and we kind of have to, there's a six-year plan, obviously, or a request, but I would say the, the next year or two, we have a much better idea of whether they're going to fund it as opposed to the sixth year of the plan.
Yeah, so I didn't know whether it would be possible to make that school a part of the phase three, rather than phase one with the pre-K additions, whether that would buy a little more time for us.
So, I, the, the prioritization really came from Pam Myers, our supervisor, who's curriculum supervisor, who's in charge of pre-K-
Right, I know.
-and our blueprint folks, the, the team, because that's a school where it's, it's overcrowded, and they are going to be getting, they're going to be one of the schools that gets a second pre-K class. I think they were slated to get one this year, but the decision was pushed, pushed off a year. So, it certainly could be done, but that would leave the school probably needing a portable classroom. So, we'd have to spend some, some amount of money to put a portable classroom to-
Yeah, I'm not suggesting-
Or, or they would have to transport those, we'd have to, you know, it's, it's, it's complicated. It's, it's possible we could delay it, but it would have other implications about our pre-K planning, so. I, and that, that prioritization didn't come, it came from, you know, we, we support the instructional folks, and that was kind of their prioritization. So, we could go back and have a conversation with them, but-
Mr. Whistler.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. It's just funny, it just, it's really important for the public listening to understand that these pre-K additions, again, blueprint mandates, that's about twenty-six million dollars right there, because of mandates, that they really make the mandate, but they don't give a lot of the funding. And again, we have to fund half of it locally, I believe, right? About that.
Yeah, approximately.
Yeah, that would fund all of our roof replacements. But speaking of roofs, and again, I, I thought I remembered, maybe I'm incorrect, but wasn't Oklahoma Road Middle roof replacement in the mix about a year ago? And I'm just, I don't see it on anything.
It, it has been funded by the state through a separate program, a healthy school funding program. So, it was originally in the CIP request in the plan-
Right.
-but the state has a separate kind of funding pot for projects that improve the environmental quality of, you know, the schools. Roofs qualify, but, you know, lead, lead-in-the-water-replacing of pipes or HVAC where you have conditions that are poor. There's other projects that are eligible, but, so we applied for the Oklahoma Road roof replacement through that, and, and it was funded. So, we, we have the state money, the state commitment for that project, so it came out of the capital plan.
Okay. Are there any other roofs that we're looking at doing this for, or is Oklahoma Road the only one?
Oh, so North Carroll Middle Roof, which were, currently was, was being done this summer and will finish next year, was funded by a healthy school fund from two, two years, two fiscal years ago? Two or three, you know, I think it was FY twenty-two fiscal year. So, and then next year, when the window opens next spring, Shiloh Middle is the next roof we have, we, we very well may request that as part of that healthy school fund.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I'm going to say, I want to thank the custodial staffs and the maintenance, because they keep our schools up to the best conditions possible, or we would be in a really bad shape.
Yes.
So, I need to thank them, because they are keeping our schools together, they're keeping them clean, and they're taking care of problems when we have them. So, I cannot thank that, that whole group enough, because they are saving us money, but this is a lot to take in, a lot, a lot, a lot. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, I need to move on to unfinished business and eight A, possible board committee topics.
So, board members, this is an addition that we added for the end of each meeting to go back over what we have discussed tonight and determine if any of the, any of the ideas that we discussed would be appropriate for any of the board committees to put on their agendas.
I've really not seen anything tonight.
Well, and, and, all of the board committee agendas, future topics for this year have come to you already.
All right, they bother me and stuff.
So, they have been set, but, you know, we can certainly look at adding something if there's something that really is pertinent to a particular committee.
You know, even though I can't think of anything now, it is good to have a place setting for it on the agenda.
Yeah.
That will sort of refresh our memories as we look at our discussions in the future, and maybe there are going to be topics that we can add. So, it's just good having a placeholder here.
Mr. Whistler, did you want to-
I think for me, you know, maybe for the teacher advisory, I'd really love to hear, I'm not sure when they meet next, I think they meet maybe in the next few weeks, but I'd love to hear an initial feedback from the teachers on how well they think the cell phone policy's going, and if there's any issues or concerns. But that would be something I would be interested in hearing from. I'd love to hear from our teachers on, on, is it going well? Is it not going well? Should we be more restrictive, or what? But I'd really like, like to hear from staff.
Don't quote me, Mr. Whistler, but I think it is October is our first meeting. We will for sure put that on the agenda.
Okay. I was just trying to think about the, the academic performance information that we got tonight. Is that anything that we want to get feedback from the CAC, or, or maybe talk about with the teacher advisory council?
Yeah, for me, it was just, it was really interesting to see the certain grade levels, like grades three and four for ELA went down, grades four and eight for math went down. You know, I know for me, just anecdotally, my son was in eighth grade last year, so he was in that algebra class. I was really, I'm really proud of our school teachers for, for getting us out of fourteenth place for algebra last year. That, that was, it was a really, a big achievement for them this year. But, like, I know my son really enjoyed IXL. That was really impactful for his learning this year, for the, for the math thing. But are there any other tools that maybe our teachers saw that, like, what really caused that jump, that jump? And that would be nice to get feedback from them too on that.
Mr. Shakni could certainly add that to the TAC agenda as well.
Yeah, because I know CAC's already got all their agendas set, so. They're all set. Yes, from last month, so. All right. Five PM Thursday, October tenth, board meeting with public participation in the boardroom at one twenty-five North Court Street, Westminster, Maryland. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Mr. Whistler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. I tried, folks.
Thanks, everyone.